Hey, good evening, everybody.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Council President.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening. Councilmember Spadola, your niece or nephew is so adorable.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, it was, uh, it was nice to meet him.
Oh, it's right. It's a little girl, right?
Boy, boy.
Boy?
Yep.
Oh, he's cute enough to be a little girl now, okay?
Yeah, hard to tell at that, at that age.
Oh, but she, he is so, so cute.
What did I miss? Did James have a baby over the weekend?
No, I, I went to Texas and I visited my nephew for the first time.
Oh, lovely, lovely. James, I did look into that for you real quick. I'm sorry I didn't see your message to return it, but I spoke to a couple of people over there, including my son's pediatrician. No one has had any issues with their internet.
Okay.
So there isn't a mass conspiracy to hack the internet. Maybe if they're having problems, if they call the providers, if they try to figure out what the issue was, maybe directly with the provider.
Okay.
Is it Wi-Fi or is it Wi-Fi?
James, you explain to Michelle what's going on.
Mine, um, mine went down too. My internet, my Outlook.
Maria, I emailed you about L and I, not Wi-Fi.
Oh.
Michelle, your hair looks nice.
Thank you, thank you.
You up to something, honey? I can see it all in your hair.
Don't start it, Councilmember Oliver.
A second. How does my hair look?
I'll see you.
You see me? I want to know why my picture's not coming up when I take the picture off. I got my hair did too over the week, before the weekend Friday.
Oh, it looks nice.
Well, I actually had it updo because I had that event Friday and then the repeat on the weekend.
Your picture, I wonder why?
I don't know. I'm gonna try to fix it before the meeting starts. Let me find my things to move my minutes along before Yolanda job sorted. Thank you, Yolanda. Whenever I'm not ready, I love that you're always on top of it.
No, no, no. I am so glad that you now, you've got it under control.
Yeah, I can't find my paper.
I just didn't want us, I didn't want us looking like, you know, like we didn't know what was going on.
Yeah, you didn't want that, that.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, shoot, okay.
Right, bring the chit chat in, right? Bring the chit chat in.
We're thirty, thirty seconds out.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Is my flag too bright?
Oh, I like it.
Thank you.
Your flag, Yolanda.
I like that.
And you found it online. I thought that our background it gave us was too dark.
Oh, yeah, the one that I have is dark, very dark.
So I got the Wilmington City flag.
Oh, can you send that to me?
See, Yolanda, where is it? Okay, Yolanda, it's here.
Time, the time is now six thirty. And Congo, you may now begin.
Um, meeting, meeting will please come to order. Just as a friendly reminder, for anyone who would like to make a public comment, there is a Google Form signup link in the chat. A public comment will take place after all non-legislative business as usual. Uh, we will begin by having an opening prayer by Akira Granado.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harm's way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Amen.
Amen. At this time, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of, United States of America, the Republic.
Public, which stands. One nation, under God. Divisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Please call.
Councilwoman Gray. Councilwoman Darby.
Present.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Present.
Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilwoman Fields.
Present.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Field.
Present.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Present.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Present.
Councilman Spadola.
Present.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Here.
President Congo.
Here.
Thirteen present.
Meeting of the minutes on the previous meeting.
March eighteen, twenty twenty-one, City Councilman virtual Virgo session, the budget at six P M. President Ernest M. Congo, the second presiding. The opening prayer was done by Akira Granado, Deputy City Clerk. The pledge of allegiance was recited by City Council.
I move that the minutes be accepted as written.
From properly moved and seconded that the minutes be accepted as written on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Committee reports.
March eighth, twenty twenty-one, President Members of Council, City of Wilmington, ladies and gentlemen, we hear Public Safety Committee by virtual meeting to who was referred, ordinance number twenty-one zero fourteen entitled. In order to authorize and approve three one-year extensions of contract two one zero zero one P D S E S between the City of Wilmington and the Assets Managing Alliance. For professional service building management at the Public Safety Building. I've given this ordinance careful study. This is a moment, I have to read the complete committee report. Respectfully submitted those members present. Councilwoman Dixon, Councilwoman Gray, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Spadola. Uh, President Congo, absent with leave, Councilwoman Walsh.
I move the committee report be received, recorded and filed.
Okay.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the committee report be received, recorded and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Mary Bill.
Are there any more commit, committee reports?
Sorry. March eleven, twenty twenty, President Members of City Council, the City of Wilmington, ladies and gentlemen, we hear Community Development and Urban Planning Committee. By virtual meeting to who was referred, ordinance number twenty-one zero fifteen entitled. Approve the Riverside Phase Two Major Subdivision Plan of the Wilmington Housing Authority and Penrose LLC. And to authorize the City of Wilmington to accept as a public right of way the dedication of a new section of East Twenty Eighth Street. Have given this ordinance careful study and recommend Council put on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted those members present. Councilwoman Cabrera, Councilman Field, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilwoman Fields. Councilman Spadola, Councilwoman Darby and President Congo.
I move the committee report be received, recorded and filed.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded that the committee report be received, recorded and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried.
March fifteen, twenty twenty-one, President Members of Council, City of Wilmington, ladies and gentlemen, we hear Public Works and Transportation Committee by virtual meeting to who was referred. Ordinance number twenty-one zero zero nine entitled. In order to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract two one zero zero four W D between the City of Wilmington and Diamond Mechanical, Inc. HVAC and related system inspections and maintenance. I've given this ordinance careful study and recommend Council put on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted those members present. Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Walsh, Councilwoman Gray, Councilman Field. Councilman Spadola, President Congo, absent with leave, Councilwoman Brigida Fields.
I move this committee report be received, recorded and filed.
Second.
Been properly moved that the committee report be received, recorded and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried.
March fifteen, twenty twenty-one, ladies and gentlemen, we hear Public Works and Transportation Committee by virtual meeting to who was referred, ordinance number twenty-one zero ten entitled. In order to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract two one zero zero five W D. Wilmington and I D Griffith, Inc. for oral inspection and maintenance services. I've given this ordinance careful study and recommend Council put on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted those members present. Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Walsh, Councilwoman Gray, Councilman Field. Councilman Spadola, President Congo, absent with leave, Councilwoman Brigida Fields.
Mister President, I move that committee report be received, recorded and filed.
Been properly moved and seconded that that committee report be received, recorded and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
March fifteen, twenty twenty-one, ladies and gentlemen, we hear Public Works and Transportation Committee by virtual meeting to who was referred, ordinance number twenty-one zero eleven. In order to authorize and approve a one-year contract two one zero zero seven W D P S between the City of Wilmington. And Merrick Construction Engineers, Inc. for building raceways and facilities management. I've given this ordinance careful study and recommend Council put on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted those members present. Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Walsh, Councilwoman Gray, Councilman Field, Councilman Spadola. President Congo, absent with leave, Councilwoman Brigida Fields.
Mister President, I move that committee report be received, recorded and filed.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that that committee report be received, recorded and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
March fifteen, twenty twenty-one, ladies and gentlemen, we hear Public Works and Transportation Committee by virtual meeting to who was referred, substitute number one to ordinance twenty-one zero twelve entitled. In order to enact certain traffic and parking regulations, have given this ordinance careful study and recommend Council put on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted those members present. Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Walsh, Councilwoman Gray, Councilman Field. Councilman Spadola, President Congo, absent with leave, Councilwoman Brigida Fields.
Mister President, I move that committee report be received, recorded and filed.
It's been properly moved and seconded that that committee report be received, recorded and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Motion carried.
We have one more, President Congo. March fifteen, twenty twenty-one, ladies and gentlemen, we hear Public Works and Transportation Committee by virtual meeting to who was referred, ordinance number twenty-one zero thirteen entitled. In order to name the South Wilmington Wetlands Park Project, the South Bridge Wilmington Wetlands Park, have given this. I recommend Council put on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted those members present. Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Walsh, Councilwoman Gray, Councilman Field, Councilman Spadola, President Congo, absent with leave, Councilwoman Brigida Fields.
Mister President, I move that committee report be received, recorded and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that that committee report be received, recorded and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. City Treasurer's Report, please.
April first, twenty twenty-one, total investment four hundred and sixty-two million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Total cash on hand, twelve million, six hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Grand total, four hundred and seventy-five million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and three dollars and forty-five cents. Wayne Simpson, Treasury.
I move the Treasurer's Report be received, recorded and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the Treasurer's Report be received, recorded and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I'll accept the motion to accept all non-legislative business.
So moved. Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept all non-legislative business on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Does anyone have any resolutions for this evening?
I do, Council President. Oh, I'm sorry. What is this?
Does anyone have any resolutions to present or anyone coming to speak on any resolutions?
Yes. Yes, Council President.
Council, Councilman Johnson.
Yes, uh, good evening. I, I would like to introduce a resolution to the White House. Whereas it is the sense of the City of Wilmington City Council to always honor individuals and organizations. Who demonstrated outstanding, outstanding achievement, deserving recognition and acknowledgement. Whereas the Honorable Joseph R. Biden Junior was duly sworn, sworn into office as the forty-sixth President of the United States. He was elected to Newcastle County Council in nineteen seventy, was elected to U S Senate in nineteen seventy-three, what he served until, until two thousand and nine. Um, when he then went on to serve as Vice President from two thousand and nine to two thousand and seventeen. Whereas during the eight years as Vice President, Biden successfully negotiated several legislative acts to help the country navigate economic challenges. Including Budget Control Act of two thousand and eleven, which resulted debt ceiling crisis and the American Taxpayer Belief Act of two thousand and twelve. Which is passed to revert the enactment of the American Reinvestment Act. Whereas President Biden was sworn into office during the worst pandemic in a century that we as a country continue to experience today. More than five hundred thousand lives have been lost to COVID- nineteen, a higher death rate than World War Two. The resulting current health and economic crisis has left many households isolated, fragile, food insecure, disconnected from traditional safety nets. Whereas President Biden's remedy to the COVID-nineteen crisis includes a one point nine trillion dollar stimulus package named the American Rescue. Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one. It's designed to deliver immediate relief to American families. Is one of the most generous expansions of AIDS support in recent history, while also granting direct relief to American families and also local governments. Whereas the ARCA spends most of the money on low-income and middle-class Americans, the state and local governments, little funding going towards Congress. The plan is one of the largest federal responses to a downturn Congress has covered in decades. The ARCA will likely boost growth in two thousand and twenty-one. The highest level in decades according to comments, and reduced amount of Americans living in poverty by thirty. Black Americans, Hispanic Americans, and poor families with children are set to benefit from this. Now therefore be resolved, uh, Council of City Wilmington, that the Council is pleased to commend Delaware's first son, President Joseph R. Biden Junior. That outstanding commitment and dedication and service that he provides to our community. Um, at this time, unfortunately, uh, due to ongoing scheduling and a lot of urgent matters. Um, there is not a representative, um, available, uh, this evening to attend from the White House. Um, but we have been in contact with him. This, uh, this commendation will be sent to the White House. Um, so I applaud all my colleagues, um, who are, who are not only, um, congratulating our first son, but also excited. About, um, the possible change that we can make as a local government with these additional funds. Um, not since the New Deal, you know, this is some public investment, um, government spending. Very thankful and, uh, um, looking forward to more investment by federal government.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Do any other council members have any resolutions?
I do, Council President.
Okay, Councilwoman Fields.
Yes, I'd like to, um, recognize Earl and Aaron Cooper, Earl Cooper Golf and Car Plug, uh, Factory LLC. Whereas it is the sense of City Council to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. And whereas successful business owners, Earl Cooper of Earl, Earl Cooper Golf, and Aaron Cooper of Car Plug Factory LLC. Sought to empower and support Wilmington youth. Aaron wanted to inspire Wilmington youth to dream big and to develop and achieve goals. Beyond their immediate surroundings and circumstances. And whereas Earl and Aaron Cooper, Earl Cooper Golf and Car Plug Factory organized a coat drive that resulted in the collection of over three hundred coats. And whereas Car Plug Factory understood that luxury cars command attention from youth. Aaron Cooper organized a luxury car rally wherein a series of fifty luxury cars and police. And fire vehicles drove in a single line on Sunday, February the twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. To the Wilmington Hicks Anderson Community Center to submit the coat, coat donation to the community center and community gathering. The goal was to garner attention from the youth to demonstrate the love the Cooper brothers have for Wilmington youth. And to inspire them to not only be successful in business, but also to remember to give back. Now therefore it be resolved by the city, uh, by the Council of the City of Wilmington. That this council is pleased to commend Earl and Aaron Cooper, Earl Cooper Golf. And Car Plug Factory LLC for the outstanding commitment and dedicated service that they provided to our Wilmington community. Thank you so much, Earl and Aaron Cooper, and I believe Aaron is on the, um, is on the call.
Yeah, I'm here. Um, uh, I want to say thank you. Uh, I greatly appreciate you guys, uh. I guess taking, uh, notice of what we're doing in Wilmington. Um, a big thing of, uh, I would tell you guys. The main reason why I do it is you pretty much hit it on the head. It was just me being a young man. I'm from Wilmington, but I wasn't quote-unquote raised in Wilmington. Um, but I will say my life sort of changed when I started seeing people, um, in nice cars and just doing nice things. And where I was quote-unquote unable to sort of see those things in Wilmington. I thought it would be pretty cool to bring those things to Wilmington because I know when it impact me as a young man. It was basically if I could see it, I can achieve it. One of those things and I think. For a lot of kids in the city of Wilmington or just in Delaware, just being a small town, and nothing's wrong with it. It's just some things that we just don't get to see. Um, and I feel like with the help of just the council. Just, you know, you guys just taking notice of this, um, and just different people in the city that have reached out. And just helped me and encouraged me and my brother to keep moving forward. And we're feeling like it's just a good impact. Because there's certain things that we were able to happen to us. And it's propelled me in so many different ways where I feel like it's just only right for me if I want to be a business owner in the city of Wilmington. Is to give back to these kids and give them an opportunity that somebody gave to me. Um, so I just feel like it's only right just to, just to do this.
Thank you, Aaron.
Uh, Councilwoman Oliver, you have your hand raised?
Yes, yeah, thank you, uh, Mister President. Aaron, I'd like to give kudos to you and your brother for the outstanding work you're doing in the community and just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Harley.
Uh, yes, I also want to congratulate the Coopers for the, um, outstanding work that they're doing as well. Um, how can, um, individuals contact you, um, for your program?
Um, right now, uh, I would say the easiest way to contact me, uh, to be truthful is through my social media. Um, which is on Instagram is at Car Plug or at Car Plug Factory. And then as well, which would be my email, would just be carplugfactory@gmail.com. Um, but I am interested, I, I believe, you know, teamwork make the dream work. So I definitely need help. Um, and I don't mind helping people because I know where I am in life that a lot of people got together and helped me. So it's only right for me to sort of, you know, move in that direction as well. So I do appreciate.
Awesome, and congratulations on this recognition.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Aaron, for everything you're doing for our children here in the city. We all appreciate it, man.
Thank you.
You and your whole family.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Fields, did you have any other resolutions?
No, that would be it.
The comment.
Councilwoman, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other council members have any presentations?
Uh, yes, um, Council President, I have two.
Okay.
Uh, I would like to begin with the first, uh, with, um, congratulations to, uh, St. Elizabeth. I do see that, uh, the coach Cooney is actually on the line, so I just wanted to go ahead and begin. There is my. Okay, just a moment, I'm sorry. My apologies now, where is my? Uh, the resolution. I do apologize. I thought I had everything saved, just a moment. Uh, well, I just would like to start off by, uh, again saying that, um. This is actually not the first time we've gotten a chance to have the Vikings, um, congratulate the Vikings. They've actually been doing, uh, quite well. Not only this season, but the previous season, since I've actually been in council. I believe it was actually the boys team the last time. And now we're here to congratulate, uh, the girls in the D I A championship. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, uh, I had to, um, as I was unable to print it out, so I had to pull it up.
Okay, that's fine, take your time.
Thank you. Okay, all right, thank you, I have it. All right, and so I am sponsor of this, uh, resolution and congratulations. Whereas in the sense of City Council to honor individuals and organizations. Who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. And whereas the St. Elizabeth Girls Basketball Team won the D I A A Girls State Championship. With fifteen straight wins for the twenty twenty-one season on March twelfth, two thousand and. with fifteen straight wins for the twenty twenty one season on March twelfth, thousand twenty one. This after their last season was cut short due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. The team came back with even more determination and refused to lose. And whereas the St. Elizabeth Vikings led by Coach Dan Cooney pushed through to defeat Sanford in the championship game after playing a ten zero regular season, the girls went into the playoffs with the same mindset that got them through the season. Play hard, unselfish, and stick to the game plan and came out on top, beating Sanford with the final score of forty seven, forty five. And whereas city council would like to commend the coaching staff, Dan Cooney, Paige Davis, and Alexis Murphy on their win, but most importantly, for the commitment to the Viking team. And whereas the senior leadership, Olivia Lynch, Nia Pulliam, January Tate, that helped guide their team until the very end, set a great example for those who will continue the Viking legacy. All members of the twenty twenty one varsity girls basketball team, Rory Siskowski, Riley Eckhart, Adriana Gonzalez, Erica Huggins, and Sarah, I'm sorry, Sarah Mazaluski, Melon Pollen, Farah White, and Maya Williams are commended on bringing such an honor to the city of Wilmington and the sixth district. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city Wilmington that this council is pleased to commend St. Elizabeth's varsity basketball team for their DIAA Girls Basketball State Championship, the pride they bring to the local community. Thank you so much, guys. Uh, and if uh if you could please bring on Mr. Coach Dan Cooney and if he has anyone else, if they have a few words.
Yeah, I saw, I think I saw his name earlier, but I don't see it now, but I do see other members from uh Saint East. If anyone would like to speak.
Good, Coach um, who needs to come here?
Can you hear me?
Yes, there you go.
I'd like to thank uh Councilwoman McCoy and everyone on city council um for the great honor tonight, um, that you're honoring the the girls, the Lady Vikings. On, yes, it um was an incredible season. Um, we we went through a lot where we had a breakage with uh COVID. Um, but the girls during that time period never lost focus on what their goal was. And that was to um basically win every game and be there on that final night to compete for a state championship, which they did and and ended up with the forty seven to forty five win to become state champs. Um, I couldn't be prouder of a group of young ladies than I am. Um, everyone, I don't know if you realize, but this year the kids had to compete um wear- wearing a mask. Um, and to be able to do that in basketball where it is a lot of running and up and down and nonstop is just remarkable. Um, that they they did what they did, but every time I would bring it up to them, their response was this is what we have to do to play, and so this is what we're gonna do. And um this group was very determined. Um, they set a goal in the beginning of the year, and they didn't allow anything to to get in the way of it. When things weren't going quite the way that we thought it would, they just reached down deeper and and battled to to make sure that they would achieve their goals and and they did it. And once again, I couldn't be prouder of them. Um, it was a wonderful season, not only winning the state championship, we went undefeated. And I'm not sure that any team um has done that in in girls' basketball in the state of Delaware. Um, but that was just, once again, who this group was. And um, right, I I'm just, I'm so proud of them. And I just want to say thank you again to city council uh for the honor tonight.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the school that would like to speak? Uh, we do have a couple of council members who want to congratulate you, uh, Councilman Johnson.
I just wanted to say to Coach Coon and the the rest of the uh young ladies, uh, congratulations. Um, your grit and determination is much appreciated. Um, it's a school that's near and dear to my heart uh as as my wife is is on the board and also a Saint East lifer. Um, so the school is near and dear to my heart, and I was tracking you ladies, uh, as always, do track the sports. And uh I'm just proud. Um, you know, even playing with a mask is unbelievable. Um, and you really made the city of Wilmington proud, so uh um I hope training all season um goes well. And I look forward to hopefully you ladies capturing the title next year. Thank you.
Councilwoman Caver.
Yes, I just want to also echo uh what my council members have shared, and that is to congratulate you. Uh, definitely quite defeat in spite of everything that's gone on this past year. Um, not being able to, I'm sure, practice, the exercising, the mask, and trying to socially distance. Um, and to just go out there and bring it home, I congratulate you. I played basketball in my school at St. Agnes. And um we didn't win the championship, but we were the runners up, so I know this is a really uh important moment for them. And good for you for doing it in spite of all the challenges, and congratulations, Coach, for everything you've done to inspire them. So keep it going, keep those championships coming.
Right, congratulations, Coach, uh, Dan. Uh, incredibly, like my council members said, my colleagues said incredible feat, going undefeated, playing a mask. I'm not sure how the ladies pulled that off. That's definitely definitely remarkable.
Yeah.
Um, when when Councilwoman McCoy was reading that resolution, she kept saying defeated Sanford, defeated Sanford. I think I heard it like at least ten times, so it like cut me like a knife because I'm a Sanford, I'm a Sanford, uh, Sanford's my alma mater. But congratulations, uh, nonetheless. That's all I heard was defeated Sanford in that whole resolution. But uh definitely congratulations, man, and congratulations to all the young ladies and all the families who uh supported them throughout their season. It was a great game. It, uh, not, Nia Pulliam. Does she have, does she have an older sister that also went there?
Uh, she went to Concord.
Oh, okay, I think it's the same family.
Yes, Nia is on on, I wish she would speak up.
Yeah, is it, that's uh, that's Pete's daughter, right? He's a firefighter, woman firefighter, awesome.
Correct, correct.
All right, that, yeah, definitely congratulations. So I guess I I guess, I guess I do have to be kind of happy for him since um Pete and I, Pete and I go back to Dell State, so uh, congratulations.
In case you didn't know, we beat Sanford.
Oh, my goodness. All right, we're gonna go ahead and sign off now.
Nia um raises her hand, we can bring her over.
Please.
Um, we do have a hand raised by Rory. Is Rory a part of the team, Coach?
Yes, she should be, she's with Na'vi.
Nia is here.
Okay.
Start the video? Yes, no. Am I speaking?
Yes, the floor is yours now.
Thank you for uh honoring us tonight, it means a lot. Oh.
Oh, you're welcome, congratulations. Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
So Nia, Nia. Nia, who's who's better, you or your sister?
I am.
You are, I figured that. All right, congratulations. Make sure you say congratulations to um to all your teammates from all of us on council.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks again, Coach, uh, Councilwoman McCoy, did you have any other comments before you go to your next one?
Uh, well, no, I just wanted to say uh thank you once more to the great, uh, you know, that valiant effort. I mean, ten zip with masks on, I tell you. I said, uh, it was remarkable, so um I just, um, I'm happy to keep uh cranking these out because you guys are steadily winning, so you know, um, good luck to the future when it comes to your uh your teams. I I hope to see you here again. Thank you again, uh, Coach Cooney. All right, so um I actually have one more uh resolution. And this one is for a resident and business owner within the um sixth district in the Hedgesville community. I hope, I I didn't know whether I, um, he's on, I didn't get a chance to check for his name.
I don't see him over there. If if Carlos is on, can he raise his hand?
Yes, I don't see him either.
Okay. Okay, well, I still actually really wanted to read this, um, so I just wanted to make certain that he was aware of just how much he's appreciated. All right, so this is, I'm sponsor of this resolution. Whereas in the sense of city council to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. And whereas Ubaldo Carlos Valles has been a resident, business owner, and a staple in the sixth district for close to twenty years. Carlos, uh, he is known in the community, is a proud owner of Bloomsbury Forest on South Van Buren Street in the Hedgesville community. He's also been an active member of the Hedgesville Civic Association and was once a member of the sixth district neighborhood planning council. And whereas during the COVID nineteen pandemic in spring twenty twenty, Carlos made the tough decision that many of our local businesses have had to make. He needed to close his business and to search for another source of income, all while still being available by request at the flower shop. Carlos saw the struggle within the Hedgesville community for testing and ensuring that all community residents had masks and that they needed to get through these tough times and took a position with the Department of Public Health as a field investigator. And whereas Carlos worked hard on contact tracing, specifically the sixth district in the minority communities, his job until encouraging residents to be tested and practice all the suggested safety measures. And whereas Carlos now wants to be sure that all the residents who are eligible for the vaccine have the information and assistance to receive it, his dedication to his community and the selfless acts that he has portrayed throughout the his time in this community, especially during the pandemic, is truly admirable and deserving of recognition. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city Wilmington that this council is pleased to commend Ubaldo Carlos Valles for his outstanding commitment and dedication of service that he provides to the local community. Um, I just wanted to make certain that I got a chance to recognize Carlos, uh, that's basically what we call him. And uh, one of the reasons, uh, if any of my colleagues have seen that I've been on the Facebook, the social media, more so putting information out, trying to get people tested, was it was his encouragement. He wanted to make certain that people uh were put on this, you know, making certain that everyone had that information. And he was just like, you know, uh, Michelle, do you have anyone? Do you know anyone? And I'm like, you know what, let me find out who is really, um, who's interested. And those, that information led to me pretty much putting that post up almost weekly, just trying to make certain that people had understanding that vaccines are available. And even though he no longer could um support the uh the list that I was actually putting together, it was, to me, it was his take charge attitude when it comes to the um sixth district and making certain that people were social distancing when it came to those uh neighborhood stores and such, and that they were wearing their masks. So I just want to tell Carlos, thank you, I appreciate all that you've done and what you continue to do. And um that's basically it. I'm just so glad that I have an engaged citizen like him, um, the resident within my community.
I thank you, Councilwoman McCoy. Uh, we do have a couple of council members who do want to uh chime in. Councilwoman Caver.
Maria, you're muted.
You can tell because my lips are moving. Okay, so I just wanted to say, um, this is so deserving, um, because Carlos has also been calling me up, letting me know if you know anybody that needs to be tested, Maria, here are all the sites, so he's really done a phenomenal job um as a COVID tracer um in that role that he's playing. But I do also want to remind the community that um Carlos is a man of many hats and many of you might know him from Bloomsbury Flowers, which uh first he had in Trolley Square. And then he's now working out of his own property right there in Councilwoman McCoy's district, right on Van Buren Street. So I just want to give a shout out to him for the excellent work that he also does as a florist and um for his professionalism, going above and beyond. Um, he did all the flowers for my mother's funeral, and I'm very thankful to him for that. But just whenever there's an occasion to support him as a business, let's also support him because we see the kind of person he is. Um, and the other thing that he does is he puts on this wonderful Day of the Dead display in his business. So if you want to learn a little bit more about the culture, and basically we know it is All Saints Day uh in the Mexican community and many Latin American countries celebrate the Day of the Dead. When we honor our families and we believe that during that time they can come back and transcend the spirit world, so they build altars with all their favorite things, and it's just a really great way to remember your loved ones, and it eases that pain of the loss. So that is something that Carlos has also taught our community, and he's been featured in several uh newspaper articles. So thank you for recognizing him, Councilwoman Darby, I mean, Councilwoman McCoy, and for, you know, just recognizing all the work that he's been doing to help our community, especially the minority community and the Hispanic community, because the language barrier is also an issue when it comes to these vaccines and testing. Um, so I just echo your sentiments, and he's a wonderful person. I'm so glad we have him in our community. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilman Johnson.
I just wanted to echo Councilmember Cabarras's sentiments as uh I thank you to Carlos. He's someone that, um, if you're anywhere on the West Side, any event, um, Carlos is there, Carlos is always there. Um, he's selfless. Um, and one other initiative that that my colleague didn't even mention was that he's even doing the lights on Wilmington, uh, so he's assisting uh with getting actually, you know, LED lighting throughout um the West Side in the city of Wilmington. So there's just so many initiatives that he's worked on, um, and he's always willing to help. So, you know, he is a true public servant and really um a perfect example of what makes Wilmington uh the great diversity that is. So thank you very much, uh, Carlos and and family.
Well, thank you. Councilwoman McCoy.
Um, uh, basically I didn't have anything else to state. Um, yes, uh, I believe that you may have the Carlos is a a little mixed up, but that Carlos is still a very close person person uh that's in my life as well when it comes to lights on Wilmington, because he has truly been doing a great job in the uh brown town in Hedgesville community, because I do believe that uh lights do uh promote safety. But uh, Mr. Valles, he's um, he's an extraordinary florist. I, my husband has actually spent quite a bit of money there. So I like to say that because of the fact that, you know, we want to make certain that we always take care of our local, our own. We want to make sure that the the our dollar circulates in our community a few times. And um Carlos is actually our our florist of choice. He does an excellent job, and I first met him before council when he used to be on Second and Market, that area. So um, you know, and then to find him in the uh the Hedgesville area, I'm like, this is wonderful, I'm so pleased. And if you ever want to take a look at some of the flowers, I think I posted a few of them on my uh on my social media page. He's great, so that was basically it. I just wanted to make certain that everyone had an understanding and knew what a great um individual he was, or he is.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Walsh. Councilwoman Walsh, did you have any comments?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, since we're kind of upping the game on how long has Carlos provided flowers for all of us? I'm one of his um folks from Scott and Delaware Avenue. That's where I started out with Carlos, and I've ended up with him at his present location. He's always been a great vendor in town, he's a great guy, and you know, he's doing God's work right now. So thank him so much. Thank you for doing this resolution for him.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walsh. All right, we do have several sympathy resolutions that I want to acknowledge uh from. Alright, we do have several sympathy resolutions that I want to acknowledge uh, from, from all of councils. Uh, Emma Denise Davis, from Councilwoman Caver, Carol and Nordheimer, uh, myself, Beatrice Dunn, from Councilwoman Harley's sympathy resolution for Barry Boding, Councilwoman Oliver, sympathy resolutions for Louise D. Smith, Karen Reason, James Robertson Senior, and Carolyn Wang, and from Councilwoman Walsh, sympathy resolutions for Hugh Horning and Frederick Charles Payton. And at this time, I would like to just have a moment of silence for the passing of former Governor Dale. Okay, thank you. Were there any other council members who had any resolutions? If not, at this time, we will move to uh, public comment. And also, this is just a friendly reminder that there is a Google forum signup in the chat for anyone who would like to speak. The time limit is, is on three minutes. When you are around thirty second, when there's around thirty seconds left of your three minutes, I will give you a uh, a friendly reminder of the time that you have left. And please uh, address, uh, only, only address uh, myself. I think that we have one uh, person who has signed up for public comment, Mr. Tykeem Booker. Mr. Booker, are you, are you able to uh, unmute yourself?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Alright, uh, so thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. Um, let me just uh, turn my audio down so there's no feedback. Uh, so ladies and gentlemen of the city council, thank you for giving me the chance to share my story today. My name is Ty Booker. I'm the director of Urban Athletic Football Club. It's a soccer club designed to help at-risk youth use soccer to get into college. I currently reside in Wilmington Brown Town area and have lived in the city for the last eight years, mostly on the riverfront. Before today, I've spoken with Councilwoman Dixon and State Senator Lockman about my concern, and they both have been extremely helpful. I started U A F C three years ago and have survived the pandemic with many college prospects on my roster. In twenty twenty, I spoke with then-director Kevin Kelly about my wanting to partner with this, with Wilmington to bring an affordable youth soccer option to the city. At this time, there is only one alternative, but it's a private organization called Sporting Delaware, located on Wilmington's riverfront. The average cost to participate at Sporting is three thousand dollars a year. My program has three levels, which are all well below Sporting's average. My program fees run from six hundred to fourteen hundred a year, depending on level. My two thousand four boys team is a top-rated team in the state and is the only Delaware boys team representing Delaware State in the US Youth Soccer Regional Tournament this June in Hamilton, New Jersey. It's already known that the cities, the city environments do not cater to soccer, but highlight sports like American football and basketball. My program was using Eden Park for almost a year without issue. We were told on Tuesday this week, March thirtieth, that we can no longer practice at Eden Park. The reason given was that a newly formed committee did not want practices, only games at that location. Eden Park is turning into a beautiful site that should be highlighted by city resident, residents and outsiders alike. Programs like my own should not be told to practice somewhere else, especially if my program is looking to work uh, with the city to promote youth soccer. From the likes of Virginia, New Jersey, Maryland, and Pennsylvania, the visitors we would bring in that would not otherwise get to see the beautiful work that you put into the park. We need to use Eden Park due to the turf. The playing surface is, is safer for the, for, to prevent injuries to our high-level athletes. Please consider allowing U A F C to use Eden Park to help grow youth soccer in Wilmington. Studies show that playing sports translates to children's success. However, studies also show that the percentage, percentage of urban kids being active in sports have decreased due to lack of diverse options. I'd like to work together to make soccer affordable and accessible in the city and bring it to all the youth here um, at Eden Park. Thank you, and I hope we can make this happen.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Booker. Uh, can you leave your, if it's okay, can you leave your, if you're comfortable with that? Can you leave your contact information for anyone who would like to uh, to help you with your program?
How would you like?
You can leave it in the chat or you can um, say it, you can, you know, say it now so people can take your con- contact information down?
Absolutely.
Mr. President, this is uh, Daniel. We do have uh, Mr. Booker's information in the public comment signup form.
Okay. And if it's okay, if he's able to, for those who aren't able to see that, if he's able just to maybe give his email or contact number so people can jot it down?
Yep. So my cell phone number is area code seven one six five one zero two seven one zero. My email is pretty long, but it's my first and last name, so just tybooker@UAdevelopment, all spelled out, league, all spelled out, dot com.
Okay. And just before you go there, uh, Councilwoman Oliver has some remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, we're just going to echo what you said, the ex uh, chief of staff to forward over his email address and telephone number. Thank you so much.
Okay, alright, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. President. And also, uh, Councilwoman Dixon has my contact as well.
Okay. Alright, take care.
Thank you.
Alright, I don't think that we don't have any other uh, any other participants for public comments. At this time, we're going to go to legislative business. Uh, Councilmember Gray.
Resolution to present. Resolution twenty-one zero nineteen, Agenda zero zero four three. Whereas President Joseph R. Boden Jr. proposed passage of the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one to provide help to the many Americans who are suffering due to COVID nineteen. Where's this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea-nay vote?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. If this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea-nay vote on the question?
Yes, um, this is a resolution identifying a process and focus for federal funds to, to be received by the city of Wilmington from the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one to ensure responsible fiscal oversight and to ensure the discretionary funding, decisions, priorities, the needs of the underserved communities most impacted by COVID nineteen. Now, that's a long title and it really is not very explanatory. What this is, is a resolution asking council members to support our involvement in the decisions on how to spend the um, the revolution, uh, the Rescue Act money. Um, President Biden passed the bill that just um, we gave a resolution to congratulate. And out of that, Wilmington is estimated to get fifty-five million dollars. This is only an estimate and the rules for how this money is to be spent are not totally, um, they haven't been brought to us yet. They're still trying to iron it out. We're still getting um, decisions from attorneys and from the federal government on how this money can be used. But this resolution is just asking council to be at the table to decide how these funds are going to be spent. The mayor in his budget address said that um, this was a decision that he wanted to make to uplift Wilmington, to bring Wilmington up to our underserved communities. And he also said he didn't want short-range solutions. He wanted long-range, not Band-Aids, but long-range solutions that will uplift Wilmington. So I'm just asking council to support that we are at the table to make sure that the underserved communities are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gray. I would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Johnson.
Um, I, I appreciate Councilwoman Gray's uh, sentiments. I certainly um, support the intent. Do have a slight, uh, some questions even about the um, demand of, of, I guess, approval by council. I'm not sure where our legal authority lies, uh, because since it's an executive function. Um, and just to be clear, that all things requiring council approval, um, definitely will go through the finance uh, committee and will go through the normal budget process. So I can say that as chair of the finance committee, that that's the expectation. And we've already had uh, early talks with the administration. Um, so I believe we're on the same page, but I just wanted to clarify that it is, it's not, it, there's going to be a clear process. We've already identified, um, you know, errors with the, with the mayor and we're going to do this. But the language with this is a little bit of slippery slope. Um, can you answer this, Councilwoman Gray? I mean, what, what, what is the mechanism that, that you're actually seeking?
Well, let me read the goal because I think this addresses your um, opinions toward this resolution. The goal of this resolution is whereas cities continue to respond to the pandemic, we focus on effective governance, public health, and economic recovery over divisive politics. We are committed to working in a fashion to secure direct flexible funding for vulnerable population realizing that they are the most impacted and to share the goal of keeping our residents healthy, our community safe, and vibrant. The goal of this is that we are the legislative branch. We are co-equal to the executive branch. I think we should be at the table when these issues are discussed, when the decisions are made on how the money is spent. This is also taking into consideration the needs of the city. But the vulnerable, underserved, under-resourced communities need to be addressed. And I think that the elected council members need to be at the table for the discussion.
Okay, and, and, and thank you very much. I, I think that answers part of it. Um, but this, this is going to be a crucial time and just let you, like, we had a meeting even early this week. I mean, I, I, I believe our, our, our goals are aligning with administration. So I don't want to make it seem like we're not having those talks. I mean, we know where we need to invest and I, and I look forward to that process. But again, we're not clearing the process, Councilwoman Gray. So I know as finance chair, we're going to be taking it a step at a time because again, it's so many unknowns right now.
Mr. President, may I address that?
Yes, thank you, Councilman.
Who are we? You said we have been addressing this. Excuse me, I haven't finished. Who are we? We are addressing it. We identify it. We know. Who are the we? I'm saying the we should be council members. Who are the we? You?
No, Councilwoman Gray, uh, council president. Uh, no, uh, was in a meeting earlier this week. I mean, this is again, this is stuff that we can discuss offline, but I just want to let you know that we are one council, you know, we are bringing these concerns to administration and we just, we're going to make it an orderly way. I just want to let you know, I'm right with you. And because we have a chance to really bring out Wilmington, so we can't blow this chance.
Councilmember, if I can remind you just to please wait to be recognized before you, before you uh, speak. Thank you. Councilwoman Gray, did you have any other comments?
Um, yes, you know, this is, this resolution is encouraging working with the executive branch of the government. And um, it's just that the mayor said that he wanted to look at long-range solutions to bring Wilmington up. And I think that us, as I stated before, as representatives of our districts, we would be very aware of where the most under-resourced and underserved communities are. And I'm just asking that council agree that we, we, council members that are interested in doing this, be able to sit at the table during the discussions to identify our under-resourced and underserved community. Thank you.
I count, thank you, Councilwoman Gray. Councilwoman Harley.
Thank you. I was, I was on mute. Um, so first of all, I do want to um, commend Councilmember Gray um, for thinking ahead. Um, when we learned that there was money coming down the pike, um, I think that's us as the legislative branch doing our due diligence to think about um, how we can represent the people that elected us. And I, I think that what, and I haven't talked to her in terms of um, what her, you know, what was driving force or the impetus um, for doing that. But in my head, I, I just thought about last year when um, CARES Act funding became available, um, the majority of this council did not know um, what was going on with the CARES funding, did not get updates, um, and just wasn't at the table. And I know that everyone cannot be at the table. I understand that. Um, but I think because there was not um, enough transparency um, last year and not pointing any fingers or anything like that, but um, just, just uh, being pretty, you know, just uh, why this uh, this legislation came into being. Um, I, I think those are good reasons um, to just make sure that there's transparency, um, that our voices are heard. And there is a way where uh, we can collectively strategically um, share input, even if, wha- whatever way or however way that looks. I think what is, what, what is key here is that our voices are heard. And I think that's the spirit behind this legislation. It, this round, with this pot of money, um, to say, hey, you know, I would like to um, share input as it relates to what the needs are um, in my community and your community and our community um, collectively as a legislative body. And I will also say that I'm happy to, to know that being a part of a update meeting with the mayor, that the mayor seems to uh, be very interested in us collaboratively um, working on how we are going to utilize those funds. So I, 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 I just have, you know, um, great positive expectations as it relates to this round, this session, in terms of how um, we are going to approach these funds and how they're going to be dispersed. So I, I just wanted to weigh in um, as the vice chair of the finance committee, um, being a part of the one oh seven, being a part of the one oh eight now, and, and, and reading this legislation, I believe that the spirit behind it is being um, participating and having input and transparency. And I do believe that that is going to take place with this uh, particular pot of money this year. So having said that, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Darby.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I want to say to add me as a co-sponsor. Um, I do have uh, I want to say that I think it's important for council to be engaged, but also the community engagement piece is key too. The community was not involved with the CARES Act and how the twelve point four, I think it was, was spent. Um, it was a lot of disconnection to what people thought the community needed um, and didn't need um, in regards to what was spent in the money. So I would love to see community engagement too, not just council, um, but actual people from the community being able to give their um, input into how we spend this fifty-five million dollars. I would love to see that piece added too. Uh, but you can add me as a co-sponsor. And I do want to ask, how was, how did the administration even spend the CARES Act fund money? Like, what happened with that?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Darby. I'll have staff uh, reach out to you to answer that question.
I can answer that question if you would like me, or I can wait till after everyone speaks and answer it.
Yes, if you can uh, say that for your final comments, please.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you, um, Mr. Pres- President. Um, I would just like to state that I was also on a updated meeting with the mayor and he made it clear that um, this is a collaborative effort um, and city council would be involved. Um, I didn't pick up any bad spirits about it. I mean, I'm just thinking about how the city looks with the little bit he had, uh, what he was working with. So imagine what we can do with fifty-five million. And I said, we, because he never stated that we weren't involved. But I'm, I'm, I really support this piece and I just think everybody's getting a little ahead of itself because um, I don't um, I don't see him to be that type of person that he wouldn't be working with city council members. Um, because he said it in the updated meeting two or three times. Also, the CARES Act money, um, by we're doing a committee meeting, making everybody a sheep. Um, that money went to the neighborhood house. That money went to Stub School. I mean, it's a whole list that various organizations that were already involved because this is all new. We never had COVID before. We never knew what to do with some money that came to Wilmington, but it went to Ministry of But it went to Ministry of Care. I was able myself, I was able to refer at least 15 or 20 people to get some money for their electric bill or rent or whatever. But I was able to send that sheet to anybody who asked me, did the city have any money? And they all called me and were very, very happy that they were able to get some services. One other thing I would like to say is, I mean, I'm looking at all the money that Matt Mars, I mean, even though it's Newcastle County, he got billions and billions of dollars. He bought a hotel out there for the homeless, all of this COVID, all these different setup pop-up shops. He's still spending money. So I mean, it's more enough money that you could figure out what to do with it. So I don't think we're going to have a problem trying to get some of our neighborhoods revamped or various other things with 55 million because that's a lot of money. So I just wanted to state that I have no, no ill feelings, like I said, and I'm going to end with this. The mayor has done a tremendous job with no money or very little money. So imagine what he could do with some of our neighborhoods with this type of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes, I just wanted to add that we, as council members, had gotten an update from the Government Financial Officers Association in reference to the Rescue Plan Act guiding principles. So regardless, these monies come with stipulations on how they can be spent, the do's and the don'ts. Basically, they want you to make them last through 2024, stabilize the finances of the city as well as support programs that have long-term results. Infrastructure is actually one of the main things that stands out that we can do that the bill says we're supposed to use it for infrastructure. That's one of the ideas that they give. And that could be an opportunity for us to really stabilize our neighborhoods. We see all the crime that happens in our neighborhood. A lot of it has root causes. But imagine the the deplorable conditions that some of our residents live in, especially our children, when it comes to all this, and that is where you have the the most violence. So that is certainly one of the ways that this money could be used. And I'm not going to get into all the details. But it doesn't want you to start new programs or fund programs that can't be going on on their own. So I believe that, yes, we as council members definitely should have a seat at the table. I feel that we're already being engaged. Certainly, the resolution encourages it. But I know that we recently had a meeting about the budget and with the mayor's folks, and they had discussed this money coming in. And he mainly talked about the infrastructure and how this could be a real opportunity to have this kind of money, this one shot, you know, this once in a lifetime shot of money that we could make a real serious impact in our community. And I appreciate the spirit of the resolution. And I believe, like Councilwoman Xanthia Oliver said, that we are being included. That conversation has been had, and I'm sure that the mayor is going to want to get input. So I I'm okay with it. The resolution just basically is encouraging that it happens. But I feel that we're already being brought into the process. But there are going to be stipulations with this money. So we can't just come and say, oh, we want this and it doesn't happen and be upset because we do have to follow. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson.
Yes, I just wanted to second my colleague, Councilmember Cabrera, in that we've, the mayor already and the administration already knows, under your leadership, Council President, that we're going to have a seat at the table. So, you know, again, I think the spirit is is great. You know, I just wanted to, you know, folks to know that we're already, he knows that we have to be at the table. And then first, I do want to clear up one misconception is about CARES Act. I was not Finance Chair back then, but the CARES Act money went to the state and county. So they, you know, just reimbursed the city for expenses. So actually, the city did not get a pot of money. Now, this time, we do get a pot of money. It's a whole different game. But last time, we actually had nothing we could spend it on and it had to come from the state or county. So I just wanted to clear that up just so everyone knows. But this time, I mean, we are are at the table and I look forward to everyone being involved in this process under our Council President's leadership. I mean, we really do, again, it's not for short-term programs. It's for the long-term gain and really build up Wilmington. So I'm really looking forward to it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walsh.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Gray, you kept asking, Councilmember Johnson, who are we? And yet you use the term several times in your speech and the we being all of council having a seat at that table. Number one, Council President, I think if you simply said to the mayor, I want my entire council briefed and up to date all the time on this issue so that people do feel part of everything. Because right now, and even the council member admits, that there is no protocol. So we have no idea what the limits are going to be on this. The one thing we do know is that we're immediately going to have to repay any special funds that we have used because of the pandemic, such as our Renee Day Fund. So I think before we get into water up to our waist, I I just think we should take a step back and at least wait for the protocols to come out until passing something like this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also like to add as a co-sponsor, but as, it's actually what Councilwoman Walsh have just alluded to. I think from asking the question of how can we all be engaged in that process and not just kind of the Finance Committee members, I think it's important as far as just to make sure everyone's on the same page as far as what is happening and how they can input their information. I think it's mostly what is being asked as far as this resolution. So if that can be added into the conversation, I think that will be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harley.
Yes, Council President, so two or three things. So one, transparency is important because it it eradicates misinformation as well. So if there was a misconception in terms of how money was spent in the 107 is because there was no information that was filtered down. And again, I realize that everybody works differently. And if there were no funds for us to to agree on or for us to share input in, then that's great to know. But, you know, being briefed and 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 having information and and being educated about what's going on, it also helps with misinformation. So I wanted to make that point as as it relates to transparency. Again, I think also the legislation was submitted before meetings started. And again, like I said, I I don't know the full intent of why the 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 legislation. But no, no, Councilmember Greg made it clear. But we do know that the legislation was submitted before we start getting updates. So am I still on the camera? Something crazy just happened. I don't see anybody. I don't know if you, can you see me?
Yes, we can see your picture.
All right, so as I was saying, I I just feel as though, you know, truth matters and the legislation was submitted before we started getting updates. And I'm hopeful there are some soft guidelines as it relates to how the money should be spent, what is, what we can spend it on, what we cannot spend it on. And of course, you know, we do want to adhere to those regulations and and be compliant. So, you know, we know that that's first and foremost. And and again, like I said, it feels right this time. And I totally agree with Councilmember Oliver as it relates to the the spirit of the mayor. His tone has definitely been, you know, we're going to work on this together. And I'm just happy about that. So we have the legislation, the mayor is on the same page. So I think where we are right now is a one-win. Thank you.
All right, thank you. See any other council members? Yes, I just would like to just kind of say that I think even it's important that council is involved in in the conversation. But Councilwoman Darby touched on it and I mentioned it during the committee meeting, that I think that the community has to be involved in these conversations. Once we find out the guidelines, once we figure out what we can do and how we can help, where we can spend that money, I think this is important enough to have a committee of the whole meeting so that the public can be a part of it and be a part of the conversation. And so that everybody's on the same page, there's no misinformation. This is not our money. This is the, this is the public's money. So we have to make sure that the public is involved. I would, I would hope that we are able to accommodate them and have a committee of the whole meeting or some kind of, some kind of forum where the public can be a part of the talks with us and with the administration. That's my only, that was my only wish. Absolutely, council is going to be involved, but we have to make sure that we're not leaving out the public because they can give us some great suggestions that all of us might not, that we all might miss. And again, it is their money. It's it's not our money. So that was my only comment. And like Councilwoman Harley just mentioned, this was, this resolution was brought to the table before those conversations happened. I think it's a great resolution. And again, I think that the mayor and the administration and council, we are, we're all on board as far as, you know, both sides of the government being at the table. But we also have to make sure that the public is at the table. Councilwoman Darby.
Thank you, Council President. And I I even want to take community engagement even a step further than trying to get people to come to a committee hearing or a meeting, to one of our meetings. We aren't really good at that. So I think that it should really be, while we're in the middle of COVID, the best way I think we should be able to do that is to have a survey. And with that survey, we will connect with different coalitions, organizations who work with different groups of people to be able to answer questions and be able to let us know what they need and what they want, us taking it back to our planning councils, taking it back to our civic associations, taking it to all, every single organization we could think of that operates in the city of Wilmington, making sure they get that survey and disperse it to their people. And of course, us doing that too, to the people we know in our community, I think is bigger. We don't do too well at getting people to come to meetings. So we have to go to the people instead of expecting the people to come to us. So I think it's key that we are doing that because it was missed big time last time with the CARES Act.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Darby. Great, great suggestions. Councilwoman Oliver, you have the last remark, final remark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate all the comments from all the council members. And basically, I agree with all of them. And I also agree that the mayor is supportive and he seems to be trying to, we seem to be in agreement, the council and the mayor. So this is to be a collaborative effort. And let me address when they say that we're having updates. To me, updates means that you're being brought up to date on what is being done. That doesn't mean that we've been part of the solution or part of the decision. We're just being told what's being done as it progresses. And I'm saying I think that we should be part of the whole solution. Also, I thank Councilwoman Oliver for informing me of all the things she did last session with the CARES money because I was totally unaware that this type of money was available to help our community or people in the community. So this is just another example of lack of transparency or a lack of communication. But I was unaware of that. Also, I need to correct Councilman, well, not correct, but further explain to people that the CARES money was federal money that was given to different municipalities or government agency in the state. In the state of Delaware, they chose to give it to Newcastle County. Newcastle County deployed the money to the different government agencies in the state. And they happened to give New, give Wilmington 12.7 million. It was a reimbursement type thing. But even with the CARES money, when we talk about knowing how we can spend the money, even during the CARES money expenditures, the rules changed. So people have to make sure they understand. We don't know how we can spend the money yet, and it even may change once we start spending it. And an example of that is initially, you could not spend the CARES money on police salaries unless they were directly involved in the COVID-19 pandemic. But then, as it progressed, they changed that and all police salaries were allowed to be paid out of CARES money. So those were some, and this money, let me say, this Rescue or Reconciliation Act money is coming directly from the feds. They decided they were going to give it to municipalities, to towns, to reservations. They're giving the money directly to where the need is. So I just wanted to clear those things up. And also, Councilwoman Darby asked about the CARES money last year. We, the city received 12.7 million CARES money. 1 million or 8% went to special projects like personnel, not personnel, like PPE, supplies, sanitation, technology and other things. That was 8% or $1 million. To the community, the only money I know was 500,000 was dedicated, which is 4% of the 12.7 million, to help people with their water sewer bills. And of course, this help was money returned to the city because the city, you pay the city for water sewer bills. So 500,000, which I said was 4% of the 12.7 million, was for that program. City personnel costs $11.1 million. That was 88% of all the funds, with 10 million going to the police salaries. $10 million, I think it was from May to December, paid the police salaries. 85% of the money was, 85% was spent on the general fund. Now, what they did with it in the general fund, I cannot say. And all of this was within the guidelines of the CARES money. So I just found this out because I asked. All last year, I didn't know, we passed for the money to be spent this way. So this year, I think that we should be involved in where the money goes. Because as far as I see, only 4% really went to direct constituents. Of the money in the general fund, I would have to do more expl, more exploration or ask the executive branch of government where the money went. But this is the reason I want this resolution, or I want you to support this resolution and pass it because I really would like more communication, more transparency, and that we can beforehand address the underserved and under-resourced populations, which I think are the same ones the mayor is talking about bringing up in the community in a long-range effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gray. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray? Yes. Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
And Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadolo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
No.
President Congo?
Yes.
While yeas and one day.
Declared adopted. Any other legislation, Councilwoman Gray?
Mr. President tonight.
Thank you. Council, Councilwoman Darby.
I am bringing my, President Congo. Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance 21 dash 021, Agenda 0034. In order to cement chapter four of the city code to provide for civil fines owners of vacant properties who fail to register them.
First reading of the ordinance.
In order to cement chapter four of the city code to provide for civil fines for owners of vacant properties who fail to register them.
Mr. President, I.
Second reading of the ordinance.
I'm sorry. Mr. President, I moved that being known, the first and second reading of the ordinance and referred to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that being known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and referred to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee. Any other legislation, Councilwoman Darby?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 20020, Agenda 0044. Whereas 30 Delaware Code, Section 2101, provides that no persons shall engage in or carry on any trade or business for which a license is required without first having obtained a license from the Department of Finance. And whereas Blacks Law Dictionary defines business as a commercial enterprise carried on for.
Will this resolution be received, recorded and filed and adopted by a ye and aye vote?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, this resolution be received, recorded, filed and adopted. It's been properly moved and seconded, this resolution be received, recorded, filed and adopted by yea and nay vote? On the question?
Yes, Mr. President, may I speak?
Yes.
Yes, um, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the purpose of the resolution. I felt like it was really important that, um, we find different techniques, tactics and ways to figure out how to increase compliance in the city. Um, this will actually affect, affect the state in the past, but specifically for the city of Wilmington. And how we engage with people and making sure that they have their license, right? They have their business license to operate as a landlord in the city of Wilmington. I want to make it very clear, um, especially here in the city of Wilmington, that you have to have your business license to operate as a business, right? You have to have your, that's one of the first things in being a, a good landlord, we have, we have that good and bad conversation, right? Um, so I think it's very key and I hope that you guys support this resolution tonight. Um, and I have already been talking to state legislators on this resolution and getting support down, um, down, um, in Dover to make sure that this actually gets passed, right? Um, I believe it will have a major effect on the number of registered, um, properties, the number of business licenses will go up and be beneficial to making sure that we have housing that people can live in, um, that we can make sure people has, um, affordable and, um, up to cold housing that they can live here, um, and rent in here in the city of Wilmington. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Darby, Councilman Johnson.
All right, all right, this is actually, um, a, a very good piece of legislation. Um, because I, I do know, um, having experienced the courtroom and seen the other side of it, that just happens quite a lot in Delaware especially. Um, and we are going to face, when the moratorium lifts in September, we're going to face a huge crisis opposite with evictions. Um, and I think the state should be, you know, looking at how can we make sure the playing field is level? Um, when the eviction moratorium was lifted in September, um, I think actually September 4th specifically. Um, so after September 4th, um, we're going to need to be ready as a city. I wish it was in the city's power to control this, unfortunately it's not, it's the General Assembly, but, um, you know, hopefully we can get them to pass something before July 1st, um, because something does need to be done. Thank you. And I would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes, excellent, uh, excellent, Councilwoman Darby. Um, and it's with that spirit of accountability, um, there's no reason why you're going to be running a business, not have a license. And then that business happens to put people out of the homes, um, for whatever reason. And I agree, we're, we may have some situations coming down the pike, um, as people are still struggling to get back on their feet again. Um, so I too would like to be added as a co-sponsor and just want to say, excellent, thank you so much, Councilwoman Darby for presenting this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harley.
Yes, um, I too, okay, I too want to, would like to be added as a sponsor. Um, Councilmember Darby, this is a great piece of legislation. And I really enjoyed, um, reading the part where it states, you know, how can a landlord take a tenant to court and they're not even registered, they didn't, they don't even have a license. And so when I read that, you know, I, that was definitely, you know, a, a great point, you know, how you amplify that. And so I just wanted to say, great job, I would like to be added as a sponsor, good legislation, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fields.
Thank you, Council President, I would just like to say to my colleague, um, Councilwoman Darby, good piece of legislation, you've heard it from everyone else. Um, I think the key word there is, as an overall, is accountability. And that's what we should be doing, we should be holding these landlords accountable. Um, and the one way to make them accountable is making them apply for business license, um, to actually have rental property. So, um, kudos to you, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor and accountability, accountability, accountability. Thank you, um, Councilwoman Darby for, um, bringing this piece of legislation forward.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gray.
Yes, I would just like to echo what everyone else has said, this is an excellent, um, piece of legislation and it's filling the gaps in the system, the court system and the criminal system. There's always gaps where people who know the system can wiggle through. So I would like to be, um, added as a co-sponsor and I thank, uh, Councilwoman Darby for bringing this to our attention.
Thank, thank you, Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I'm not going to do a bunch of talking, I'm just going to echo what everyone else said. And I'd like to, um, just be, uh, added as a co-sponsor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon.
Um, thank you, Mr. President, I also would like to be added as a co-sponsor and, and also think it's really strange that an individual would actually take someone to court knowing they don't have a business license. It's just beyond me and audacity of them to do that because they, in some cases, putting themselves on blast that they don't have a business license and operating. Um, so, but, um, definitely excellent piece of legislation. Um, and I hope that the state takes hold of it and actually, um, works to implement it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walsh. Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, this is a good piece of legislation. It's a type that we should all be able to hold hands, uh, and approach Dover and say we're a unified force in, um, going forth with something like this. Um, Councilmember Darby, um, after it passes and perhaps over the weekend, if you have time, we could discuss this because I think there will be whole groups that will release real estate investors on you, but there could be a way to get around them that I'll discuss with you, if you're up to it. So, um, I think it's a good piece of legislation, I'd also like to be added as a sponsor. And, uh, thank Councilmember Darby and Councilmember McCoy for rolling with it. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cabrera, did you have any additional remarks? I see your hand is still up. Councilwoman Cabrera?
No, I, no, I do not, I think normally I saw the hand go down automatically, so I didn't do anything to stop her.
Okay, all right. I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor. And, uh, clerk, please call the roll. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, uh, Darby, did you have any final comments?
I just want to say thank you, fellow council members for all becoming sponsors and we can be unified on this and go down the city hall, hopefully. Well, it will pass, that it's going to pass this year. And we can like make a difference for the people who live here in our city. So I'm just excited for this moment that you guys, that we're all on this together and it's moving forward, so just thank you.
Thank you, Council, uh, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
Declared adopted. Any other legislation, Councilwoman Darby?
No, President.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. President, um, I have a, I'm sorry, I have a resolution to present. I have a, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 21 021, Agenda 0045, whereas the purpose of the Victims Compensation Assistant Program is to alleviate some of the financial burden faced by victims, those that are directly related to the specific offense by providing compensation for certain losses. And whereas the Victims Compensation Assistant Program was started in-
I move this resolution to be received, recorded and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Okay.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that this be, that this resolution be received, recorded, filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote, on the question?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I think this resolution is very important. The Victims Comp hasn't, um, Compensation Assistant Program hasn't been, uh, reviewed for at least, uh, 10 years. Um, so I was able to meet with the AG's office, uh, um, along with, uh, the Chief of Staff. And which was really good because they were already in a process of trying to increase this, uh, a little bit, but we were able to talk to her and lift, uh, so, um, it was 5,000 and Victims Comp used to be a person, guess like a bad accident, but right now, nowadays, it's, um, with the high rate of crime, I just think it's necessary going to various individuals' homes and a lot of people are not having, uh, insurance, I mean, um, even just as far as cremation, so I'm just glad, um, that, um, we were able to have a conversation and come up with a agreeable amount. And I have been in contact, uh, and matter of fact, Senator Brown was also on the call. So I do have some support from Dover and I just think it's necessary. So it was from 5,000 and now it's up to 7,500, hopefully.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilman Johnson.
I would like to be added as a co-sponsor, I would say, Councilmember, um, Oliver. I know has been working on this and this is a very important issue, um, just because there's not enough money. So not only does it go towards burial, but also goes towards relocation costs as well and moving costs. Um, as I've experienced, uh, folks in the system that had this issue. The 7,500 dollars doesn't get you that far because you also have to use that even towards making deposit on the place. So, uh, we definitely need to stretch that money, I think it should be 15,000. Um, because we can never invest enough to our victims who have experienced trauma, so thank you very much, Council, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Spadola.
Thank you, Council President, yes, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor as well. Uh, and one thing I want to point out to the public and for, uh, other colleagues, it's not even funded by taxpayer dollars, uh, the Victims Comp Program. It's funded through surcharges on, uh, fines and tickets. Um, so if somebody gets a traffic ticket when they pay their fine, a part of that goes to the V-CAP program. It's not-
Thank you, Councilman Spadola, Councilwoman Gray.
Yes, I'd like, I have a question, is this 7,500 per incident or is that how much the VCF Fund is going to have in totally?
Well, that would be how much they would get per incident.
Okay, um, yes, and since when I was a probation officer, we used to cut, collect VCFs all the time, that was part of the fine that we had to collect. So I understand the system, but, um, I'm very much in support of this because I recently had a constituent that her house was shot up. And she was told there's no money and she has bullet holes in her furniture and car and stuff like that. So, yes, I'm definitely in support of this being, the amount of money being raised and available, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gray, Councilwoman Fields.
I'd just like to be a co-sponsor and I think it's a good bill, I think, um, that, like she said, we need to move forward and, you know, um, the cost has gone up um, to, you know, bury your loved ones, so, um, I just, I'm in, I'm in support of it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harley.
Yes, um, another great piece of legislation, I mean, we're really hitting it out of the park tonight. So, um, I'm really excited about this, a great piece of legislation, Council, um, Member Oliver. Um, as many of you know, a lot of victims are in, um, the third and the fourth district, um, that a lot of these, and fifth district. Um, and, and all over the city, but we definitely, um, have had our fair share. And, um, I never shared this before, I'm excited about it because I've actually been helping, you know, giving out money to some of our constituents to help with some of these situations as it relates to, um, preparing for some of these funerals. So I'm really excited about this legislation. Um, I think, you know, it could probably be increased to, you know, at least 10,000, but, you know, what we have here is better than what we already had. And again, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor and thank you, Councilmember Oliver.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, as a co-sponsor, please.
Thank you, Councilwoman Darby.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, you can add me as a co-sponsor, I am, and this is a great legis, piece of legislation, I'm in full support of it. Um, there are so many people that I know, um, growing up who, um, who could benefit from something like this, I know a lot of people who had to bury family members and don't even have a, a tombstone, couldn't afford it. Um, and couldn't afford things once that person was gone. Um, so I think, um, this is an important piece of legislation that we need to support, so I'm in full support.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cabrera?
I too would like to be added as a co-sponsor and excellent piece of legislation, Councilwoman Oliver, and yes, we are hitting it out of the park. We might have quite a few home runs this evening, Council President.
Thank you, I, I agree, thank you. Um, McCoy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, well, I'm a co-sponsor on this already, as I said, because I've seen its value in the committee meeting. Um, I just wanted to ask one slight question, just wanted to find out when it came to the 7,500, whether or not that was the suggestion of the AG's office or from you, uh, yourself, just wanted to know whether or not there's a possibility that it may be, uh, it may go higher.
Um, no, I, I had requested for a little bit more, but because of the federal guidelines and this was the maximum at that point.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Remember, this is all, I'm sorry, I was going to say, remember, this is all new, Victims Comp used to be this for, you know, regular car tragedy or something, but now it's into a whole nother, um, arena.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon.
Um, thank you, Mr. President, I'd just like to be added as a co-sponsor as well, thank you, Councilwoman Oliver for the, uh, legislation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, I will, um, be voting present because some of these funds could be used towards funerals. And so I'm not going to, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to recuse myself from that, but Councilwoman Oliver, when you're having the conversations with Dover, uh, if you can, if you can ask them to also look at the fact that right now, when there are shootings in our city and like someone mentioned, if a car or if a house is shot, uh, victims, this, this fund does not, does not cover that. Uh, so if, if they can look into that, uh, because there are several people who have approached me and probably some other council members when their, you know, when their property has been shot, um, and they don't have, there's no coverage from victims of violent crime, and they are actually a victim.
Um, thank you, Mr. President, we are in conversation, um, with that now, that's why I wanted, that's why I mentioned that this is all new because a lot of this tragedy never occurred in the past. So they're trying to find out different guidelines, but we are in conversation and, um, Chief of Staff can update you on it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Oliver, did you have any other final comments?
Yes, I'd like to make one last comment, I'd just like to, I really thank, uh, Pastor, um, Derek Johnson, uh, uh, for, uh, giving me a call and he showed up at a house and he was really adamant about me following up with Victims Compensation because of the, everything we just said about the, and, and he was one that me, I said, he said they hadn't looked into it, uh, in so many years, and I told him I was going to follow up, so I would like to thank him for just putting that plug in my ear, um, thank you, um, Mr. President. Um, yes, I have a, um, I have a resolution to present.
Yeah, to the vote.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray? Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Present.
Twelve yeas and one present.
Declare adopted. Councilwoman Oliver, any other legislation?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-one zero twenty-two, Agenda zero zero four six. Whereas the Council of the City of Wilmington wishes to promote sustainable homeownership throughout the city, and whereas the City Wilmington Department of Real Estate and Housing, and the Wilmington Neighborhood Conservancy Land Bank own dozens of vacant lots throughout the city, and whereas vacant lots hamper the development of a sense of community, and whereas the Council believes there is demand for these vacant properties by home builders who wish to acquire vacant
I move the resolution BVC then record and file and adopt it by ye and they vote.
Second.
From property moved the second that the resolution be received, recorded, filed, adopted by ye and they vote on the question?
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution encourages owners of vacant lots throughout the city to be more aggressively, to basically maintain the lots. So if we're urging the community gardens, there's undeveloped lots without notifying the appropriate civic associations, or just knock on some neighbors' doors. I know the third community has received an audit.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Oliver. Yes, Councilwoman Oliver, I believe that we're on, we're not on that piece of legislation yet, about for community gardens?
No, no, no. You're right. I'm on, we on zero zero forty-six.
All right.
Yeah.
This is for the land bank.
I'm sorry. Yep, I'm on, I'm, I'm jumping again. I'm sorry. This resolution encourages the neighborhood land bank, the City Wilmington, also in the City Wilmington Department of Real Estate and Houses, to be more aggressively about vacant lots and their inventory of the purpose of building affordable homes. So I guess we're telling them to, like, put a vacant lot sign, so if we have investors to come through, which we did. I had an investor come through, and he was looking at a lot, and I told him to contact Real Estate and Housing, and he called me back and said the guy, Real Estate Housing, said it was available. But he had called me three times, and when I rode past there, I just saw this vacant lot, and I'm like, what is he talking about? So long story short, I think when this vacant lot's available, I don't, even if, I don't care if it's City of Wilmington or the land bank, just put a sign there to say vacant lot, and maybe a number or something, so people know if that lot is available. Otherwise, it could just sit there and maybe come and, it just sit there, and nobody even know it's available. I guess that's the whole purpose of it.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Gray?
This is an excellent resolution, and I'd like to be a co-sponsor. I have a couple vacant lots, and there's no advertising on it as to the stature or what's going on with them. And I've had people approach me about wanting to purchase lots also, and cannot contact the correct person or find out how much the lot is or how to go about doing it. So I'm definitely in supportive of this. Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Darby?
You can add me as a co-sponsor. I'm definitely in support of this. There are lots throughout the second district, and you are not sure who owns them, or if they're for sale, or how to even acquire that property. So I think that is so key. So people just know, right? And I know people, there are some people who don't even know what a land bank is, right? So just putting that information out there, I think is really key. So you can add me as a co-sponsor. This is another great legislation for tonight. So.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the things that I did want to state was that I do agree about the vacant lots. I'm glad that we actually want to do something about them. At least make certain that people are aware that they're there, and what their, the purpose of it is. The only thing I just want to make certain that we bring attention to is the fact that I've been to a lot of the variance in zoning board meetings, and all of these basically small houses that are kind of like missing teeth, you know, are a little too small to actually build. So I know that that's probably one of the issues on why they may not be putting that information up. But there's particular lots that are large enough to actually do something with. There's no reason why people should be guessing about what's going on with that lot. As I said, I have some in, in the Browntown area, and I think it would be great to make certain that that information is up, even the parcel number, because it's hard to identify exactly what is the, what was the address for the place now that it's gone. So I think it's a great piece of legislation. I would also like to be added to the, to that resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy. That's a really good idea to try to identify that property with like a parcel number. Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I also just wanted to have us think about also side lots, because that's how the land bank identifies some of their property, I mean, some of the ones, lots that they have, too. Those are supposed to be offered to the resident adjacent to that lot first, before it's, before it's owned by anybody else outside of that. So I think that should also be identified. When we're saying that we're putting up signs for, for sale, that definitely take that into account as well, for those side lots, especially because those are the ones that, you know, we don't want just anybody taking, especially because they're, they're right next to houses. So just thinking about that also.
Thank you. Council, Councilwoman Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. Exactly what Councilmember Dixon just said, that they really should be pushing these side lots, because especially some of our streets in places like Brown Town, where the streets are so small, and parking is at a premium. You know, I, I don't have to tell anybody on this council how expensive it is to build a house these days, but a side lot would be a great driveway to put next to a smaller house, where you could park two or three cars in it, and get those cars off the streets. So as long as it's the owner who's interested in buying it, plus it would add a little bit to the tax rolls, because they're getting a bigger lot. So I think that should be pushed very heavily, too. Sorry, Xanthie, I would have called you earlier to throw that in, and I was just thinking about it this morning.
Another great idea. Thank you.
Yes, I too would like to be added as a sponsor, and I think that what Councilwoman Dixon and Walsh just spoke about, excellent, because some of these lots are going to be too small. People aren't really going to be able to build on them. And remember that we still have a de-densification of the City of Wilmington, where we're trying to de-densify. But I think as playgrounds, parking spaces, whatever it is, just to have open space that someone is responsible and accountable for, is a great idea. So please count me in as a sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor. Councilwoman Oliver, any final comments?
Yes, and I appreciate everybody's comment, and I totally agree, because my god sister lives over on, in McCoy's district, and on that small street, it is an empty lot, and they could use, I think she's been in touch with Representative Walker, about trying to make that empty lot like a little driveway for them. So I totally agree with that. And you know, I, I just, because the gentleman called me three times and, you know, told me off about the lot, I just said, well, maybe I could do something. But everything y'all said was excellent conversation. So hopefully, I can talk to Bob Weir and whoever, and I think Ray over to the land bank, and just some of the places, you know, they have the neighbors, they could talk to them or whatever. And some of that stuff is common sense. If, like you said, if it's too small for a house. But just some of the bigger lots, I guess, just to put a sign in, let them know that for sale. But that's excellent idea for the house that's adjacent. There could also be a parking lot to somewhere, if it's a homeowner, et cetera. But that could be another conversation. But thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray? Councilwoman Gray?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
Declare adopted. Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes, the President. I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-one zero twenty-three, Agenda zero zero four seven. Whereas community gardens are promoted as collaborative projects on shared open spaces, where participants share in the maintenance and products of the garden, including helpful and affordable fresh fruits and vegetables. And whereas community gardens require significant investment of time and resources to ensure their long-term sustainability, and whereas unattended gardens can attract unwanted or potentially dangerous wildlife, including rats, raccoons, foxes, opossums, or other scavengers. And whereas unless properly maintained at the end of the growing season, community gardens can follow.
I move this resolution BVC then record and file by ye and they vote.
Second.
This from property moved, moved the second that the resolution be received, recorded, filed, adopted by ye and they vote on the question?
Thank you, Mr. President. This been a conversation, this resolution comes from a conversation that myself and some council members have been talking about for about three years now. And it's because in the third district, and it would work to my attention if you ride around expressly right down by Old Milton's Liquor Store on Twenty-Fifth Street, you have residents who live there, and it's gardens that's not maintained. So I'm definitely for community gardens. I'm just for individuals maintaining them. As I stated before, you have raccoons, opossums, everything just running everywhere. And that's because people don't know how to cover their gardens after the season change. You can't leave them tomatoes and all that seeds and stuff underneath it, and don't think that the rodents are not going to, you know, it's just having a field day. You know, ladies coming out the house, she got raccoons jumping, looking tall as she is. You got opossums everywhere. I mean, just a lot of, just a lot of rodents running around because of individuals not maintaining their gardens. I want everybody to, you know, if you have a garden, just maintain it. When the weather changes, cover it up. It's certain things you throw on your garden. You just don't leave and say, well, the food has, is, is no good, or the cabbage has died. So just leave it there. You have the, the opossums and, you know, the rodents just come by, just having a field day dinner. So that's all this is really talking about individuals maintaining their gardens.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gray?
Yes, I like community gardens, and I've had a vegetable garden. And I definitely agree with what you're saying about people who don't know how to maintain or clean up the garden, or you definitely are supposed to take up all the old dead plants and then cover. And I hate to encourage more government, but it's, I think it would be a little bit better if we made people just sign up, put, put a name to the garden, and then if they left it unkept during the winter, and it's a nuisance, that we do something to them rather than say people can't have gardens unless they go to their community civic. So what if there's not, my question is, what if there's not a community civic association?
Remember, let me, Mr. President, may I follow up?
Yes, Councilwoman Oliver?
Remember, Councilwoman Gray, this is just a suggestion. It's just a resolution. If you don't go in front of your civic association, and just to tell them you're trying to do a garden, that's up to you. But if your civic association is strong, and they find out you have a garden around there, you didn't come to them, and they come to your council person, now the council person got to come back, and it could go on and on. But just to your statement, you, this is just a resolution. It's just a suggestion. So you don't have to go to no civic association. It was just me trying to ask everybody just to be neighbor, neighbor friendly, because it's been gardens put up, and one lady called me and said, Ms. Al, I think that's messed up. You represent the district. I come out the house, and I've been away for, when she went away for three days or weekend, or five days, whatever it was. And when she came back, they had boxes out there, was planting and everything. I mean, she ended up getting involved, but I thought it was interesting that she's a homeowner, and she's been there for twenty years, and she didn't even know no one was putting a garden there. So I mean, be nice and just be neighborly, and just, you know, knock on a few people's doors and say, what'd you think about me, you know, putting a garden here? And another thing I found was interesting, she lived in Newark. She wasn't even from Wilmington, and just had the permission, just because it was a vacant lot, just to put up a community garden in somebody's community, and she doesn't even live up here. So that was very interesting. So it's, it's really bigger than this, but I'm just leaving it at this one level, because I had some people call me from the second district, and was asking me to charge people, fine them a hundred dollars. And I'm like, no, I'm not getting into all that. I just was trying to make a suggestion to ask people just to be community friendly. So that's all it is, Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson?
Yes, I'm definitely supportive of, of this cleanup. Same thing as vacant lots, looking at that. And I guess my question even to Councilmember Oliver is that, you know, what's the next step after this, you know? Because I do think maybe there's an ordinance that's needed. I'm not sure, but I'm definitely, I'll be ready to help support whoever is looking at this issue, because I think it is, of course, important that vacant lots and community gardens look the right way, so that we have safer neighborhoods.
Thank you. Councilwoman Darby?
Yes, yes. So I am not in support of this ordinance. I don't believe in creating additional barriers for people to set up community gardens. I know it's just a suggestion, a recommendation. And civic associations, planning councils are very, very small. It's a small number of the community, and I don't think they should be able to make that type of decision. And I'm a community garden owner, so I don't know if I can vote on this. But I do want to say that I'm not in supportive of it. One thing that I am working on is creating a Wilmington Community Garden Network. And I have spoke to some people in our council about it in regards to setting up on a webpage, a list of all of the, all community gardens in the City of Wilmington, and contact information to who's in that community garden. This will also be a place where community gardens can also list their events. So there will be a calendar of events, and ways that community can get involved. Also looking at having monthly meetings with all of the community gardens to figure out what the support needs. As someone who's a gardener, who loves nature, and all of those things, and growing, sometimes it's hard to, the support and volunteers needed, you can't get sometimes. So I think it's really important to build a network or coalition, where different gardens can work with each other, and be able to support and provide that support with each other, instead of adding an additional barrier of, including a civic association or a planning council, which is the same ten people for two years. And then also the community, and oh yeah, I was thinking of also experimenting with adding summer youth in there. So in the summertime, or, well, summer youth is now, well, youth employment is now year-round.
Point of order, I'm just speaking in reference to this resolution, Mr. President.
I'm speaking in reference to the resolution, too, Mr. President. I'm speaking about gardens, and.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Mr. President?
Yes.
Point of order, my, may I say my point of order, please?
Yes, you may.
Okay. I think the point of order was to, not to hear the discussion of, with Councilwoman Darby is going to do, whatever she's going to do, is in reference to ordinance oh oh four seven, because it sounds like we're getting off track here.
Yes, Councilwoman Darby, please stay specific to the resolution.
Yeah, so it was specific to the resolutions. It's about how this resolution creates more barriers for people, and I'm not for creating more barriers for people. I'm about actually creating networks and coalitions with our community to increase community engagement at community gardens, and making sure that we have resources to support them by using some of the things within the city. So that was the next step question that Councilmember Johnson asked. He actually asked, what's the next step? What, where do we go from here, instead of creating barriers for people?
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Harley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to agree with Councilmember Johnson as it relates to the next step. And, and one, if there is no, no codes or guidelines, I think this is an opportunity for some guidelines to be implemented. And when I say guidelines, I, I'm not thinking about guidelines in the sense of barriers, but I do think, you know, when but I do think, you know, when we're talking about city space and people coming up with ideals as it relates to these community gardens, there, everything in life has order. And when you, when you think about these gardens, and and they're becoming more and more, they're starting to crop up, and people are more interested, which I think is a great thing. I think it's beautiful that people are interested, but I also think that if there, if there's no code, if it's not codified, I think maybe this is a great opportunity as individuals are coming together, networking, engaging about the community gardens, maybe this would be an opportunity for them to share input in terms of some of the guidelines, because I think that if a garden is not being managed, then that becomes an issue in a community. When, when, you know, individuals don't know who to go to, who to reach out to, and I think, at the least, the, the community should know who to reach out to and who to contact, and I know there are there are different opinions about civic associations and neighborhood planning councils, but you have to start somewhere in terms of giving, getting feedback from the community, whether it's the same five people or the same ten people, but they're homeowners that feel as though that they have a stake in the community, and if they want to to come together and share their input, I think as electeds that, you know, we owe them that, to go to them and ask for their feedback and their input, whether it's a community garden, or whether it's how we should spend the CARES Act funds. In the fourth district, there are six active community civic associations, and they're very strong. And so I definitely support the ideal of getting feedback, so I would like to be added as a co-sponsor, and thank you, Councilmember Oliver.
Yes, I would like to just remind everyone to please try to stay specific to the legislation as we're talking about. Just stay, just try to stay specific to the legislation, and try not to get ahead of ourselves, I think that is a conversation that we need to have soon, but not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes, I too want to be added as a co-sponsor, and I just want to add that I too am a gardener, I believe in more green spaces, I believe that a lot of those lots should become community gardens, but with having a community garden, there comes accountability, so again, we talked about accountability earlier. Accountability, accountability, accountability. You can't just walk into somebody's home and start a project and then walk away from it and leave it, because now that very thing that you did, that beautified a neighborhood, has now become another eyesore, and we can all agree, we have enough eyesores in our neighborhoods already. So let's create beautiful things together, let's encourage our youth, I like Councilwoman Darby's idea, let's encourage our youth, let's get more of them into gardening, let's get more people involved, but let's hold folks accountable, and out of respect, if we're going to go into somebody's neighborhood just the way they would come into my home, let's ask permission if we want to do something, even if they don't grant it, as long as you agree to maintain it, it's about accountability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Darby, did you have another comment?
Yes, I do, I just want to say, point of order was put on me, but other people went off on tangents, but I'm all for accountability, but just not additional barriers on people, but actually creating networks to provide people with resources, so the point of order should be called for everyone, not just me.
Yes, I agree, that's why I made that statement after, after that comment. Councilwoman McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to state that I did get a chance to talk with Councilman Oliver about this, and this is something that we've spoken about in the last term as well. I do have understanding what she's stating. As I looked over the resolution, it really, to me, I don't know whether or not it really, did I look at it clearly? It's not really talking about anyone putting a garden in their own space. These are community gardens, so this is like property that is, that is allocated or something for what for different projects per se, so I think that if it is a communal garden, then the community should be involved in what actually happens in that piece, that piece of property. I actually am having issues with rats in my district. And luckily, that, luckily, gardening isn't the main factor of it, but you know, it is the cities as well, you know, they're really, you know, I'm trying to get them to take charge with exterminating and baiting and things of that nature, but this is just another thing that's going to add, rats are a danger, you know, they carry diseases, things of that nature, and so if we want to make certain that this is something that the community that we place in a communal space, then the community should be involved stating that we want it, and we'll also help take care of it, and I just think that that's actually, you know, or, as they, as they stated, you know, that the person who actually put the garden there will be held accountable, like if you planted it, it didn't go the way you thought it was going to go, then you have to figure out what's, what your next steps are going to be.
Thank you. The other council members? Yeah, I am going to support this legislation, I don't, I think it's, it's good because it has started the conversation. I don't think that it takes us to where we need to go, I think that Councilwoman Darby has some, some great ideas around community gardens, and I think this, this resolution has ignited that conversation. I don't think that it restricts anyone from having a community garden. So I am going to support it, but I think we just have to do a little bit more, or a lot more, around creating an ordinance, or just some guidelines around community garden, and we have to encourage you just to also make sure that people are being held responsible. And Councilwoman Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. President, and Councilwoman Darby, thank you for all your suggestions, and some good stuff came out of this conversation. I just wanted to make it clear, you know, there's a lot of people having the conversation, but it was a lot of people talking about their, their next, another ordinance on top of this, or resolution, that's the only reason why I said point of order was nothing to be disrespectful about, but I really support everybody's, I really respect everybody's conversation, and I have made contact with Delaware Horticulture, and we are meeting next week, so it is a lot of other things going on around this, this was just the beginning of a conversation, and all of these, this conversation will be noted, and I plan on bringing them to the committee meeting, so we can have a conversation with that about the community gardens, so they are on board to assist with community gardens, they already have a list of various community gardens throughout the city, that's how I was able to get a list and see that, I had quite a few more than other individuals in other districts, so a lot of that is already in place, and that's why I came up with this also with a lot of complaints, so it's nothing personal against anybody, it was just because I have constituents, and I represent the third district, I'm the voice for the third district, so when they ask me to try to do something, I try to do the best I can do, and it's not a slap in the face to any other district, it's just the district I represent, and that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
No.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Twelve yeas and one nay.
Declare adopted. Councilwoman Oliver, any other legislation?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm thinking we're doing a home run here tonight, I'm feeling pretty good about things. I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty-one zero zero nine, Agenda zero zero two three, in order to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract two one zero zero four WD between the city of Wilmington and Diamond Mechanical, Inc. for HVAC and related systems inspections and maintenance.
Mr. President, I I move this be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved as second, but this be known as the enacting ordinance, clause of the ordinance and call for yea and nay vote? On the question?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is being presented by the administration for city council's review. The ordinance authorized the city to exercise two-year, one-year option to extend the contract of two one oh oh four WD HVAC-related system inspection and maintenance between the city of Wilmington and Diamond Machinery, Inc.
I don't see any hands raised from council members. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy? Councilwoman McCoy? Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy, one more time? President Congo?
Yes.
Twelve yeas and one accident.
Declare adopted. Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for a third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty-one zero ten, Agenda zero zero two four, in order to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract two one zero zero five WD between the city of Wilmington and ID Griffiths, Inc. for boiler inspection and maintenance service.
I move this be known, enact the clause of the ordinance and call for yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved as second, that this be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance, and call for yea and nay vote? On the question?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is being presented by the administration for council's review and approval. The ordinance authorizes the city to exercise a two-year option to extend the contract for two one oh oh five WD boiler inspection and maintenance service between the city of Wilmington and ID Griffiths, Inc.
See any hand raised from council members? Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
Declare adopted. Councilman Oliver?
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for a third and final.
Ordinance twenty-one zero eleven, Agenda zero zero two five, in order to authorize and approve a one-year extension of contract two zero zero seven WD PS between the city of Wilmington and Merrick Construction Engineers, Inc. for building, raceway, and facilities management.
I move this be known as an acting clause in the ordinance and call for yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved as second, that this be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for yea and nay vote on the question?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is also being presented by the administration for council's review and approval. This ordinance authorized the city to extend a contract with two one oh oh seven WD PS building, raceway, and facility maintenance between the city of Wilmington and Merrick Construction Engineers, Inc. for one year.
Thank you. Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor on this, please.
All right, thank you. See any other hands raised? Councilwoman Oliver, did you have any final comments?
No, sir.
Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
Declare adopted. Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty-one zero twelve, Agenda zero zero two six, in order to enact certain traffic and parking regulations.
Mr. President, I have a substitute to present in lieu of the, of this ordinance, of the ordinance.
Thank you. Substitute number one to ordinance twenty-one zero twelve, revision one to Agenda zero zero two six, in order to enact certain traffic and parking regulations.
I move this be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for yea and nay vote.
It's been properly moved as second, that this be known as the enacting clause of the substitute ordinance and call for yea and nay vote? On the question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is this to regular traffic and parking regulations that is regularly known from the city of Wilmington, Act of two thousand and one, ensuring responsibility of fiscal oversight to ensure the discretionary funds prioritized for the community most impacted by the COVID. That was something totally- Given, Mr. President, this is just a regular, certain traffic parking regulations that come up here and there, where we have to put up different signs or take down various signs.
Council, Councilwoman Gray?
I'm totally not understanding this ordinance. What signs and where?
Now, this is the substitute ordinance being presented by the administrations for review approval, I'm sorry, Gray, I was looking at this other paper. The ordinance approves various traffic parking regulations in the city, and this was discussed in the committee meeting, you know, if you, over in your area, if you wanted a sign taken down, this is just regular enacting parking signs, that's all.
Are these the stop signs that we discussed in the committee meeting?
Yes, ma'am, I had the bone sheet, you're right.
Okay, thank you, I understand.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Councilmember Johnson?
I actually was going to ask Councilwoman yeah, that question, but I, but I thank you very much for getting, putting this through, as you know, we've been making a lot of, you know, changes during COVID, so I appreciate, you know, number one, your leadership, Councilmember Oliver, and then also Public Works, thank you.
Councilwoman Oliver, did you have any last comments?
No, sir.
Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
Declare adopted. Councilwoman Oliver, any other legislation?
Yes, Mr. President. I have an ordinance. Yes, yes, Mr. President. I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final.
Ordinance 21015, Agenda 0035, in order to approve the Riverside Phase Two major subdivision plan of the Wilmington House Authority and Penrose, and to authorize the City of Wilmington to accept as a public right-of-way the dedication of a new section of East 28th Street.
Mr. President, I move this be known as enacting clause to the ordinance and call for a yea and a vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for a yea and a vote on the question.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is being presented by the Administration for Council's Review and Approval. The ordinance approved Riverside Phase Two major subdivision and authorized the city to accept the dedication of a new section on East 28th Street.
Councilman, Councilman Spadola?
Thank you, Council President. I have a conflict of interest, so I have to vote present.
Okay, thank you. Any other council members? Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Present.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Twelve yeas and one present.
Declared adopted. Councilwoman Harley?
Yes, Mr. President. I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance 21013, Agenda 0027, in order to name the South Wilmington Wetlands Park Project, the South Bridge Wilmington Wetlands Park.
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for the yea and a vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for a yea and a vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President. This ordinance officially names the South Wilmington Wetlands Park Project as the South Bridge Wilmington Wetlands Park. This came from the community, the South Bridge community, that is. Just attending the Civic Association meetings, when we got to this particular piece of, let's say, the South Bridge, they are working from what they call a SAM plan. The SAM plan has about thirty-plus initiatives in it. The Wetlands project was one of those initiatives, and so as this project came to a close and the community learned that it was going to be called the South Wilmington Wetlands Park, they asked that it be named the South Bridge Wilmington Wetlands Park. So I'm excited about this piece of legislation because this is definitely driven by the community. They really wanted it to be underscored in the name of the park, so that's what this particular ordinance is all about.
Hello?
Thank you, Councilwoman Harley. Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I think this is an excellent piece of legislation. It's overdue. I lived over there for years and talk about the floods and the damage that's been done over there for years. And I'm so glad to hear that the South Bridge would be put in that piece of, in this piece of ordinance. Just the name alone, the South Wilmington Wetlands, is South Bridge, and I think, you know, Councilwoman Harley, I think you did a good job with just combining all them names together, and I know that group over there is working diligently. So I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to be added as a co-sponsor, and I also echo Councilman Oliver. I think South Bridge can sleep good tonight because they've been, they've been asking for this for a long time now, so I'm glad that they, they finally are getting it. So thank you, Councilwoman Harley.
Thank you. Councilwoman Darby?
Yes, I would also like to be a co-sponsor. I love community initiatives, and I know some people over there who are doing great work and speaking up for their community, and this would have been a perfect moment to hear from our community members on, on this topic, but we don't have that available anymore. But I'm so happy to be a co-sponsor for this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gray?
Yes, I echo that this is a great piece of legislation, and I'd like to be a co-sponsor. I've only heard of all the floods and all the problems that South Bridge has endured over the years, and I, I've heard, this has been going on for like ten, fifteen years or longer. So it's wonderful that this project has been completed to help alleviate the flooding over there, and I think the name gives credit to the community that's been fighting for years to have this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cabrera?
I too would like to be added as a co-sponsor, and, you know, there's a lot to be said, the identity that one has in a name, and I'm so glad that the community was able to have input and to embrace this completely. And yes, it's great to hear good things about South Bridge because a lot of good things do happen in that community, more than just flooding and more than all the other negative things that people bring up. It's a beautiful community. People are very united there. They come together, so I'm happy to see their efforts come to fruition. Thank you for sponsoring this, and please add me as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Harley, I'm pleased that this is a great thing happening for that community.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fields?
Yes, I'd just like to say, Councilmember Harley, great job. Keep up the good work. When I ride through that way, I can see the changes that are coming through South Bridge, so great job of continuing to stay engaged with the community. I know that's something that you always do. So great job with getting them involved and keeping them involved. I'll say that, and I would like to be a co-sponsor.
Thank you. I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor. I believe we've been talking about this since I've been on council, so definitely want to congratulate everyone over in South Bridge. Job, job well done. Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. You're right. You did just remind me, this has been before council for quite a long time. So I congratulate Councilmember Harley for getting this through, and I congratulate, actually, former councilmember Shabazz as, as a councilmember and as president of council for continuing this as an issue, but thank you for bringing it to him, Councilmember Harley. That was a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Can I have?
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Harley, any last comments?
Yes, I just wanted to thank everyone for their comments, and again, this definitely has been a longstanding community request, and it has finally come into fruition. It has married with the work that is being done underground, as it had been mentioned, regarding the mitigation of the flooding that has been taking place in South Bridge for over fifty years. It's fifty-plus years, so it was two projects going on at one time. So this piece of legislation basically is just addressing the name that's going to go on the sign, on the, on the park, the park sign, but it's married with the work that is being done underground and look for a beautification project also to come along and to come out of this. And so I want to say within the next year or two, when you ride down Walnut Street going, coming into the city, the wetlands being on the right-hand side, you're definitely going to see a big, major improvement in that particular area, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby? Councilwoman Darby? Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
One more time, Councilwoman Darby? And President Congo?
Yes.
Twelve yeas and one absent.
Declared adopted. Any other legislation? Councilwoman Harley?
That's all I have for tonight. I'm council president.
All right, thank you. You may be excused.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Fields?
No.
Any legislation?
Not tonight, the president.
Thank you. Council, Councilwoman McCoy, any legislation?
Nothing tonight, President Congo.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson, any legislation?
No items tonight, President Congo.
Thank you. Council, Councilman Field, any legislation?
Nothing tonight, President Congo.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cabrera, any legislation?
No legislation this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 21024, Agenda 0048, whereas tobacco use remains the nation's and Delaware's leading cause of preventable death and disease, and whereas thirteen point six percent of Delaware high school students actively use e-cigarettes and eighty percent of young people who have ever used tobacco.
This resolution be received, recorded, and filed, adopted by a yea and a vote?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to this resolution be received, recorded, and filed, and adopted by a yea and a vote on the question?
Yes, Mr. President. This is a resolution that implores the state of Delaware to support Representative Melissa Minor Brown and her efforts to end the sale of flavored tobacco products in the state of Delaware. We know that this protects Delaware communities, and specifically communities of color, from the harms of flavored tobacco and in reduce the ever-increasing of tobacco experimentation by youth that is perpetuates in our cycle of addiction and impoverish communities of color. This ordinance, there are thirty-five different advocacy and community-based organizations that have joined together to advocate for comprehensive legislation in order to end the sale of all flavored tobacco products in Delaware. Delaware has been working to advance fairness and justice and health, and this is one of the areas that they primarily are focusing on because of that, and we know that tobacco industries aggressively target young people as well as Black and Brown communities, and that we need to take action to protect all of our communities in Wilmington and across the state from the harms of tobacco products. And I just want to say that today is also a national takedown tobacco day where it's an opportunity for us to come together to fight against big tobacco as well as take action and protect our kids and all communities from the harms of tobacco use. And then, just to give you a quick statistic, so for example, youth tobacco use has been at epidemic levels in the United States, including here in Delaware. Our high school students use e-cigarettes at nearly three times the rate of adults in the state, and they are also seventy percent of youth are e-cigarette users citing flavors as a reason why they use it. So again, we have to protect our young people as, you know, they put it in flavors like gummy bears, Pop-Tarts, and cotton candy in order to attract kids to, to the actual product. So again, this is, again, just to support the opportunity that what Representative Minor Brown is doing in her efforts in order to pass this, to help make sure that future generations can live healthy lives without the impact of flavored tobacco.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon. Councilwoman Gray?
Another good piece of legislation, but my question is, wasn't there a law passed against flavored tobacco products in the past? Or did that not pass?
Councilwoman Dixon, do you want to respond to that?
There was in the past, and I believe some of that, and I think it was more so in, and Councilwoman McCoy could probably speak to that more than I can.
Wasn't it federal law?
No.
I don't think so, no.
Councilwoman?
Thank you.
Councilwoman, I think Councilwoman Walsh, did you want to respond to that?
I did.
Okay.
I believe it was actually the vapor cigarettes that they passed a law saying that they couldn't put the, the various flavors in, but regular cigarettes, there really aren't regular cigarettes that had a whole lot of flavor in them. And believe me, I smoked every one of them, so I know those were a fact, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walsh. Council?
You're welcome.
Councilman Johnson?
I would like to be added as a co-sponsor on this measure. I think it needs to be loud and clear to Dover that we have to stand up against lobbyists. You know, the tobacco lobby is going to be very heavy and try to oppose this, but this is common sense, especially the Black and Brown community. We're heavily affected by our rates of cancer, drugs, and alcohol use, and, you know, city council are going to be doing many things on that end as well, but this is just something that's common sense, and it needs to pass, so hopefully we can get it over the finish line by, I guess, June 30th.
Thank you. I'm having a really hard time hearing you, Councilman Johnson. I'm not sure if it's just me, but.
So am I, so am I.
I can't hear him either.
It just must be my connection, sorry.
Okay, all right, thank you. Council, Councilwoman McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I just wanted to, just basically reiterate what Councilwoman Dixon states. This is really important. I did, you know, tried to make some changes when it came to how our children see tobacco and tobacco products in our last term, of just making certain that those types of products, when it comes to our retailers, that tobacco product placement is done correctly, that we are not promoting smoking to our children by having pipes and papers and cigars next to now-laters and M&Ms. So we just wanted to make, you know, following up, this is a great, this is a great piece of legislation from, from Representative Brown, and I'm glad that councils actually really wants to stand behind her and say that we want to protect our children. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fields?
I'd just like to say, thank you, Councilwoman Dixon, for bringing this up. I think, well, I know in my, in my immediate area, I call them bodegas, I call them quarter stores or whatever. I could walk in there right now, and like Councilwoman McCoy said, the, the products are right next to the, the bags of candy, you know, like a dollar, you know, fifty cent candy or the, the, what is it, the Reese cups and bags of potato, it's just right there, and they don't even, here's another thing. They don't even ask the kids how old they are. They just sell it to them. So that's a whole nother thing, and they're being fined for selling these products to these kids, but they go, they get fined, and they keep doing it because they're not paying attention to what's happening in our community and the Black and Brown community. So I think it's important. I really like this initiative, and I just want to say that I would like to be a co-sponsor on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to reiterate what everyone else said, but I'd like to be a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Darby?
Yes, I would love to be a co-sponsor too.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes, please. Can I be added as a co-sponsor?
Thank you. I also would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes, thank you, and thank you all to my colleagues for, for joining on in this effort. And I was just, actually just told that Melissa Minor Brown, representative, her legislation will be introduced to committee during Easter break. Um, so in the next couple of weeks, this will be coming up. So, um, they are on it. So this is perfect timing for what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Harley left. Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Twelve yeas and one absent.
Cleared adopted. Council, uh, member, Councilwoman Dixon, any other legislation this evening?
Um, yes, I am going to present, um, Councilwoman Walsh's, um, legislation this evening.
Okay.
Um, so I have, uh, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty-one zero fourteen, agenda zero zero three-three, in order to authorize and approve three one-year extensions of contract two-one-zero-zero-zero P D P S between the City of Wilmington and Asset Management Alliance for, for professional service building management.
Um, that that be known as the acting clause of the ordinance and call for ye, nae vote.
Second.
It's been probably moved and seconded that be known as the acting clause of the ordinance and call for ye, nae vote on the question?
Um, yes, Mr. President. This is an ordinance, um, that the city is authorizing, um, to exercise three one-year extension option to extend, um, this contract regarding, um, the professional service building management at the Public Safety Building, um, between the City of Wilmington and Asset Management Alliance. Um, again, this will have a fiscal impact, um, based on the three-year, the one three-year, um, contract extensions, which will be a total of three hundred and three thousand, um, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents, um, that will be as part of this contract.
Okay, thank you. Just don't see any hands raised.
No.
Uh, clerk, please call for the roll.
Council. Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Twelve yeas and one absent.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all for me, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Council, Councilman Spadola.
Yes, Council President, I have an, uh, an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance twenty-one zero twenty-two, agenda zero zero four-nine, in order to amend chapter two of the city code to prohibit the establishment of police ticket and arrest quotas.
Mr. President, I move that.
First reading of the ordinance?
In order to amend chapter two of the city code to prohibit the establishment of police ticket and arrest quotas.
Council President.
Second reading of the ordinance.
First and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Public Safety Committee.
Second.
It's been probably moved and seconded that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance. And refer, did you, did you say the, uh, Public Safety Committee?
Yes.
Refer to the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you.
And I think that's it for all, uh, legislation. This time we'll go to petitions and.
Council President.
Yes, Councilwoman Walsh.
Um, I don't have any legislation, but I ask permission to be excused.
Okay, yes, I apologize. Yes, you may be excused.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gray.
Yes, thank you. First, um, for zip codes one-nine-eight-zero-one and one-nine-eight-zero-two, for individuals that are over fifty, fifty and over that would like to be vaccinated, please email me at L M G R A Y. Um, sorry, at Wilmington, W I L M I N G T O N D E dot gov. When you email me, please give me your, um, your email address and your name, and I will try to get you a slot. It's the J and J vaccination that will be held at the Chase Center Friday and Saturday, and I think there are still slots. So anyone in the first and second district, fifty years of age or older, please contact me. I have one other announcement. I got this from, um, from FEMA. I'm going to read it to you. It says, um, this is from, uh, oh, this is about COVID- nineteen pandemic has brought overwhelming grief to many families. At FEMA, our mission is to help people before, during, and after disasters. We are dedicated to helping ease some of the financial stress and burden caused by the virus. Under the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of two thousand and twenty-one and the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one, FEMA will provide financial assistance for COVID- nineteen-related funeral expenses incurred after January twenty twenty twenty-one. We're working with the stakeholder groups to get their input on ways we can best provide this assistance and to enlist their help with outreach to families and communities. FEMA will begin to implement COVID- nineteen funeral assistance in April. Additional guidance is being finalized and will be released to potential applicants and community partners. So I guess you can contact FEMA or you can contact me and see if we get any further information, but anyone that had, that is deceased, that was deceased after, uh, I think it's January, I lost it now, twenty twenty, and the, from COVID and the family incurred funeral expenses, it seems like FEMA will reimburse you to what level, I don't know. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. I think it's up to, uh, nine thousand dollars. Councilwoman Gray.
That's good for you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gray. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Darby.
Yes, um, there's two things going on in the second district, and one is coming up in the, um, next few weeks. There's a Delaware football showcase. It's going to be on April twenty-fourth. Um, it's for rising ninth and twelfth graders who are, um, who play football. Um, and it's a chance for you to have, um, to get, um, you, like you're, you playing football recording, whatever that is, right? And for you to send it off to colleges, right, um, to colleges so they can see you in action playing football. I didn't play football, I ran track. That was my thing. I don't know about, but I think it's a great thing for, um, rising ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders. Um, if spots are limited, um, you can go to W W W zone six I X sports dot com slash store. You'll be able to register your child, or if you want to attend, you can also attend, it's going to be at the stadium at the Celeste Anum School, um, at Sally's, so definitely, um, if you can, show up for support or get your child registered. Um, another thing going on at the stadium this summer, I'm bringing up the flyer is the annual track and field by the, um, City of Wilmington. Um, this has been going on for decades. When I was a child, we used to go, um, running track and competing. Um, I remember going, getting lots of medals. I ran track, um, as a child, so definitely come out. They're starting off at Mount Pleasant though, it's going to be on June second and June ninth. You can bring, um, youth ages, um, my daughter was going, she was four years old running, sometimes they have two, three years old, years old children running. So from two, three, all the way up to age eighteen, they can participate in different, um, track races. So you can do, um, the one hundred, two hundred, four hundred. They're not doing relays this year, and that's the best part about running track is the relay. So after June second, June ninth, it's going to be at Baynard Stadium, which is Sally's Stadium, whatever you want to call it. Um, and it's every Wednesday night, um, there's going to be championships, trophies given out, medals given out, so it'd be something to do outside in the midst of a pandemic. Um, and something for your child to be active after being home, sitting, eating, all the kids want to do is eat. Um, so definitely, um, check those two events out at Baynard Stadium.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Darby. That, that's everything?
Yeah, that's everything.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, uh, during this time, Mr. President, I have, uh, communications that I would like to, I would like the clerk to read into record.
March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, the Honorable Cynthia Oliver. Dear Councilwoman Oliver, by way of this letter, you are hereby advised that Eastside Community Learning Center Foundation, represented by its CEO, Charles S. McDowell, applied for the rezoning of three zero zero one Bowers Street. Copy of, of the application is enclosed here, and as you may be aware, the application is submitted to the city clerk, which.
The President, I move this communication BBC, recorded and filed, and refer to the Planning Department and Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Oliver.
Need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver.
So this is going, uh, be putting, is going to be moved to, sent to the Planning Department and Planning Commission. Thank you. Um, now my, um, my, my announcement for this evening would be April the second, which is tomorrow at six P M. Uh, we have, uh, Minority Opening Produce Place, uh, twenty-four hundred Governor Prince. Uh, two sisters from Philly are, have opened up a produce place and their grand opening, uh, soft opening, I'm sorry, it's tomorrow. They're going to have a grand opening, uh, with the City of Wilmington in the upcoming weeks. I'm just, um, so glad to see some produce, uh, on that Governor Prince Boulevard. It's overdue, and, um, I, who doesn't want fresh food? So if you're not doing anything tomorrow at six o'clock, stop by and give the two minority sisters a play and buy, um, some fresh fruit from them. Um, also, I'd like to give a shout out to Jesse and James, um, barbershop on Vine Street. Um, they have billboards up throughout the city from the Delaware Lottery Commission, um, for being, um, members for over forty-five years and never own the, um, commission, the, the number, the Delaware Lottery, no money for forty-five years. Uh, I said, wow, what an accomplishment. Uh, so that's Jesse and James, you can look up, I saw a billboard up two oh two, they have them throughout the state. Uh, Delaware Lottery put them up for them. That was, that was good stuff. Um, also, I would like to give a, a huge shout out to, um, Gwen and Henry, the amazing work that they're doing with this COVID outreach, um, with Newcastle County. I mean, words can't explain the work that they're doing. Um, we, um, I know it's a big city drive tomorrow, um, as Councilwoman Gray has said. Um, Wolfie and some other people gave us some vouchers for slots for Friday and Saturday for individuals to go down to the Chase Center and receive the Johnson and Johnson shot, the one-time shot, and all of that is the work of, um, Henry and Gwen, uh, working with Newcastle County, and, I mean, through the state also, but the work that they have been doing to just get that information out and forcing the Health Department to, you know, step up their grant game and get, um, the vaccinations in the black and brown community. I have to give, um, Newcastle County, the governor, um, and I think it's in partnership with the mayor also, have to give them kudos of the outstanding work they're doing with these vaccination shots. Um, it's just amazing. And a lot of people I've been talking to are just happy and proud to be receiving them, uh, and especially the seniors. So, um, that's all I have to say tonight, um, Mr. President, and I'd like to be excused.
Thank you, may be excused. Thank you. Councilwoman Fields.
Thank you.
Um, yes, Mr. President, thank you. I'd just like to, um, I know there's a lot of Easter egg hunts going on this weekend, um, Saturday. Um, I do know that, um, there's, let me see, baskets of hope, free Easter baskets for children at the Urban Vintage Thirst, Thirst Store right here on, on five hundred, um, five hundred West Second Street, and that's from ten to twelve. I know that William Hicks Anderson is doing one, and I know that the, um, Cool Springs, Cool Spring, Tullamore Park neighborhood, they're doing one also. I don't have the, um, the actual times, but if anybody wants to give me a call, um, they can, I'll have it for them by tomorrow. Um, I just wanted to say, um, just like my other counterparts, you know, we're all working very, um, hard together, um, to make sure that, um, our black and brown communities are vaccinated. I like to, um, I'm not going to go back over, but, um, to everybody, just thank you for, um, for pitching in and trying to make sure that we, we keep our, um, our community vaccinated. And us as council, we've worked, we're working together, everybody on council are working together, um, collectively, asking each other, do you have this? Do you have that? What you have? Do you have a name, number? Um, so I think it's, um, the one council, one oh eight one council is, is really proving itself that we can work together, and tonight has shown that we can work together. And I just have a quote that I want to, um, I want to read. It says, "If you cannot do great things, do small things in a great way." And I think we're taking those small, that we're taking those small steps to make things greater, um, and that was by Napoleon Hill. So, um, thank you, um, Council President, thank you, my council members. Council President, I wonder if I could be excused? Thank you.
Yes, you may be excused.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Um, well, first I just want to say, um, actually, thank you so much for the invite for, to the, uh, great event that we had last Saturday. Um, that was a really, I was a little sore, but I really had a great time, and I got a chance to see, I got a chance to see quite a few people I hadn't seen in a while, so I thank you so much for, um, organizing that, putting that together, and giving me a chance to work with my, um, my colleagues. Also, just wanted to, um, remind, well, actually, I put some information up on, um, on my page, I'm going to make certain that I, uh, I put that information again. There's a, a National Day of Service, and it is, um, creating great, I'm sorry, creating during COVID. And it's a theme event, um, for, uh, like, for the children, and it's during this pandemic, it's going to be on April seventeenth, it's from eleven A M to three P M. Like I said, it is a flyer, and it's basically, uh, all of children from, uh, ages K through twelve. They're all welcome to participate, and there is a registration that you have to do as well. So this information was given to me through, um, the Metropol, uh, someone from the, uh, Metropolitan, uh, Wilmington Urban League, and I just wanted to make certain that I shared it again. Uh, so many different sponsors, and you know, the city is, uh, sponsored. Key, uh, Camor's, Rodell, uh, N C B W. So we just want to make certain that our children, like, right now, we definitely are looking at a little bit of learning loss, and we just want to try to encourage them to be the great selves and keep all, you know, try to learn for fun, if that's possible, to try to make fun, you know, learning fun. Also, on April seventeenth, I did see that the, um, it is the Roberto Clemente League, they're actually going to be having their opening day, so I wanted to make certain that I got a chance to put that information out there as well because, uh, they have presented to our, to Education and Families Committee, and I'm just so happy to see, you know, the kids are finally trying to come back outside. It's, it's been a year, and people need to take a breath, and, um, no better time than to, you know, springtime and getting everybody, trying to get everybody back together, but make certain that we still stay covered up because COVID is still, uh, you know, here. Um, last, last thing I had was, uh, April second, which is tomorrow, is actually a holiday, it's Good Friday. So just the mixer and everyone western ninety-five knows that recycle will not be picked up until Saturday. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes, the, um, the only, uh, well, the urgent announcement is, um, budget season is upon us. Um, so we have, uh, you have the full budget schedule on the W I T N website, um, but the first budget hearings are this Wednesday, April seventh. Um, but the first budget hearings are this Wednesday, April seventh, and it's, um, we're starting now fast, so it's the mayor's office, city council, and treasurer's office. Um, the three very important offices, um, this is open to the public, and there is opportunity for public comment as well. So similar to council meetings, um, you can ask, uh, an administration any question. We can grill them, go through their finances. Um, because we are facing unprecedented times, and, and we wanna make sure, um, we're being good, good stewards of taxpayer fund. So, um, everyone come out, um, as this goes on, I'll, I'll make further announcements, but please, please, please come, um, and, and join us with the budget hearings. It starts at four thirty, and I'll, um, probably go at least till six thirty or seven P M. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Field?
Uh, well, first of all, I just wanna thank, uh, you, President Congo, for your efforts in organizing the volunteering event last Saturday. It was, it was a very fun event. It was, so many people were out there. It was good to get out, good to, you know, get engaged with people from all over the city, and I really like your initiative of, your idea of, of like, one volunteering event per month or something like that, maybe, maybe every two months. It's really, it's a, it's a good initiative, and, um, um, I commend you for it, and, uh, so thank you, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, council, Councilwoman Cabrera?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I do wanna announce that, uh, starting on April sixth, uh, the vaccination, the COVID nineteen vaccination program will be open to Delawareans sixteen and older because, uh, now that we do have the supply of the vaccine, they are opening it up to anyone sixteen and older. Um, you can, you're eligible for the vaccine at pharmacies, mass vaccination events, and community sites. I know that A I DuPont, uh, sent me an email, um, to register my teenager who is not interested in getting the vaccine in any way, shape, or form. So, anyway, we still have a lot of people sitting on the fence in terms of the vaccine, and I think now more than ever as leaders, we really have to get the word out and try to break down all the fallacies and really educate people. So I'm glad that we did get together, and we're gonna be doing some P S As, so, um, look for those, um, as we try to get out there um, and get them out to, you know, all members of the community. I was part of it in Spanish and in English. Um, and then I just wanna say congratulations to everyone on the event. And I personally could not be there this time around, unfortunately, a previous work engagement that was scheduled in advance for this weekend uh, took precedence. I had the wrong date. I thought it was on Saturday, but it was Friday into Saturday. But good job. I think we got some really good, um, feedback from the community. People appreciate it, and I look forward to us doing more events. I do want to wish everyone who celebrates a very happy Easter, um, to the Christian community. Happy Easter. Tomorrow is Good Friday, a very solemn day. Um, and, you know, I thought this was a really good meeting, and we don't always have to agree. Um, and there's times we're gonna disagree, but at least tonight we were able to come together, give our thoughts, our opinions, and support each other's legislation, and even if you didn't, at least, you know, it was a thoughtful conversation. So I thank all my council colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President, and, um, just looking forward, and not looking forward to the, to the budget part of the, our job, which is the most important part of the job. So yes, we do encourage everyone to watch, um, and be present. So thank you, everyone. Enjoy. Until the next meeting.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
Um, thank you, Mr. President, and again, I also wanna echo, um, the comments about the one, uh, council event for the, the food distribution. Um, it was a lot of fun, and probably like Councilwoman, uh, McCoy, I was a little bit hurt, uh, afterwards, the next day as well, um, of, of all the different lifting, but I will say, um, and I know we gave over like two thousand dollars worth, um, of food, um, to the community and, um, and within two hours, which is unprecedented. So, um, that is definitely something to be applauded for, and all the work that everyone put into that event in order to do that work. So, um, thank you for that. And then also, um, the community, please take advantage of the tickets or vouchers that are still available from council members. I know I gave out, um, several today, um, to, to council members, and thank to, to, to Council, um, Woman Fields. Uh, she, uh, gave me, uh, part of hers, so I can give out to, a portion to the community as well, so I, I thank her for that. Um, and so please take advantage of that, 'cause I did have someone still call me after about, um, more for, uh, more, uh, vouchers. So definitely if, uh, take up Councilwoman Gray and Councilwoman Oliver and all those that, that still have tickets and vouchers in order to go for the Johnson and Johnson, um, that's just tomorrow and Saturday. A lot of the community has been asking for the one-shot option. The one-shot option is here. Um, so just make sure you take advantage of that. Um, and then also Wilmington Little League is, uh, still, will be playing this year. Um, so they are, and they're gonna be accepting students, um, well, youth into their league, so they are always looking for, um, young people to participate. And then last but not least, um, the community job fair, um, that will be happening on Wednesday, April seventh, um, from three P M to six P M, uh, will be happening as part of Reach Riverside, uh, with their project as far as to making sure they'll have, um, folks that can help with onsite construction, um, subcontractors, uh, for completing their first phase of their redevelopment project. So, um, take advantage of that and that opportunity, um, to be able to have, to work in your own community on that important, um, initiative that's happening in the Reach Riverside area. That's all I have this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Councilman Spadola?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, just, uh, sorry to miss, uh, the event last weekend. I was in Texas visiting my newborn nephew, um, but I'm glad it went well. Look forward to the next one. Um, and yeah, that's all I have. So, thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. Again, just wanna thank, uh, everyone for, for our, for our event. That was definitely not my event. I wanna thank all of my council colleagues. I wanna thank the staff on here on the ninth floor. I wanna thank the W I T N staff. I wanna thank all of the volunteers. I wanna thank Reach Gospel, um, radio station for being out there and broadcasting live and helping just to spread the, the word. I wanna thank everyone at the pandemic food, um, distribution. We could not have done it without them. Uh, it was just a, a great event. It was our event. Uh, it was the council's event. We fed, uh, we fed a thousand families on Saturday for, um, we gave each family enough food for a week. Uh, so it was, it was, I also wanna thank Eastside Charter. They were there. They let us use their, their parking lot. A lot of the, uh, the teachers and the faculty, they were there to help, also to help volunteer. Uh, it was an awesome event, and we did it together, so I just appreciate everybody for donating and volunteering and planning and, uh, just making it, uh, an event that we're gonna try to do on a regular basis for our community. It's not always gonna be a food drive, but we'll just come up with different initiatives where we can just engage ourselves with, with our city. Um, wanna hap, wish happy birth, a happy birthday to my mom who is celebrating her birthday tomorrow, and my father who celebrates his birthday on the eighth, yes, next Thursday. Happy birthday, Mom and Dad. Um, wanna encourage everyone to, to be a part of our, our budget hearings that Councilman Johnson referred to. And again, you can go to W I T N's website to get the, um, the budget hearing schedule. Um, also, if you missed anything this evening, you can always call us at City Council at five seven six two one four zero. Again, our number is five seven six two one four zero. Thank you for everyone who was with us just this, uh, this evening, engaging and, and giving us your input. We really appreciate you for being a part of our meeting. Just encourage you to keep doing so and bring other people with you next time. Um, and with that, I think that is everything. Just wanna encourage everybody, a lot of my council members, my colleagues already mentioned it, just to continue to stay safe. I know a lot of people are being vaccinated, but we still have to remember that the pandemic is among us. We have to continue to socially distance, wear a mask, and, uh, continue to wash our hands and sanitize, and just be careful. Uh, it's, it's still is, uh, it's still a real threat to our community. And we just wanna encourage those who are comfortable with getting vaccinated. You wanna make sure that you have access to it. So again, if, if you missed any of the announcements about any of the vaccinations, uh, vaccination sites, just please call us at, at Council at five seven six two one four zero. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
None of us left. Happy Easter, everyone.
Motion carried. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Have a great weekend. Happy Easter.
Night.
Happy Easter. Happy resurrection day.